Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. It's our August 9th, 2021 meeting. If we'd all please arise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And before I get on with any items on the agenda, I'd just like to read this, you know, announcement from, it was put together by our corporate counsel, and it's to all attendees who are, all attendees are required to comply with Executive Order 13A, which requires that any person while indoors in a public place who does not maintain a safe social distance of approximately six feet from every other person and who is not fully vaccinated for COVID-19 shall cover their mouth and nose with a mask or cloth face covering. Compliance with this executive order is required for all attending the meeting. So I just ask everybody to please comply with this. Which brings us now to our call to order. I'd like to introduce the members of the commission that are here this evening. To my far right is Commission Member Jeff Kohan. Next to Jeff is Jamie Hine, who's an alternate on the commission. To my far left is Armin Menard, who is a alternate on the commission. To my immediate left is Steve Allenson, also an alternate on the commission. At the lower table, to my left, the staff table, is Cheryl Ann Tubby, our recording secretary. And next to Cheryl Ann is Kevin Pagini, who is our town planner. And then sitting at the first row is Amy Torre, who is our zoning enforcement officer. Next item is consideration of our minutes. However, as there are several members of the commission who were at our prior, last month's meeting are not in attendance, we're going to, we're going to defer that until our September meeting. It brings us to our first item on our agenda, which is item number one. It's a special permit is for Montanei Construction at 5 Research Parkway. We had closed the public hearing last month and fully anticipated voting on the application, discussing the application and voting on the application this month. Unfortunately, early today, one of the commission members informed me that there was a business commitment that came up, that he was not able to relieve himself from, if you would, so he would not be attending. You know, I initially had contacted the applicant and asked the applicant, because we only would then have four commission members to vote on that particular application, to give the applicant the option of either having the commission discuss and vote on the application or continue it to our September meeting. Prior to the applicant getting back to it, I had, back to me, I talked to other commission members, and we made the decision that the commission, given that the fact that that application, we had three meetings on, there was substantial amount of presentation by the applicant, as well as from staff, from outside third parties, as well as from the public, and we felt it was important that we have five commission members act on that application. So the decision was made by the commission, although we do have a letter, and I'll ask Mr. Allison just to note the letter from the applicant that we received subsequent to the commission making its decision, asking us to defer action. So that application will not be discussed and not be voted on this evening. The commission has until September 16th to make a decision on that application. So we fully expect that at our September meeting, we will have five commission members that will be at the meeting, that will be fully informed on the application and ready to vote on the application. I just do remind everyone, the public hearing, you know, has been closed, so the commission, you know, does not receive any additional information from staff, from the applicant, or any additional communication from the public. And that's, that's kind of where we are in that application. I, I know some people may be noting, gee, you have five people here. Mr. Menard, quite candidly, I was not expecting him to be at the meeting this evening, but Mr. Menard did not participate in any of the, any of the Amazon applications, so he would not be in a position this evening to, to act on the application. So why theoretically, we have five people here, we only have four people, four individuals that would be in a position to, to discuss and vote on the application. So that's where we stand on that. And Mr. Allison, if you just please note for the record, the letter that we did receive from Robinson &amp; Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a correspondence from Robinson &amp; Cole to Chairman Sechter dated August 9th, 2021.
Thank you. And with that, it brings us to our second item on the agenda, which is a special permit, 1070 North Farms Road LLC, 1711 Northrop Road and 2 Northrop Industrial Park Road East. And again, this is a continuation of the public hearing. So I would ask the applicant, and again, I, just before we began the, the meeting, I did ask the applicant initially that we only had four commission members, but as you can see, we now have five. So at this point in time, again, Mr. Allenson, if you would please note all additional items for the, for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have an interdepartmental referral, date of submission, March 4th, 2021, from our fire marshal. An email from Dennis Sennaviva dated 3/31/21. An inter-office memorandum from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated April 8th, 2021. A memorandum from the Department of Engineering dated April 28th, 2021. Correspondence from Thomas Talbot Planner dated April 29th, 2021. Memorandum from Vanessa Batista dated April 29th, 2021. Correspondence from James and Shirley Shadish, I apologize if I mispronounced that, dated May 14th, 2021. Email correspondence to Kevin Pagini dated 5/6/2021, from Shirley and James Shadish Email correspondence from Dennis Sennaviva dated May 6th, 2021. Email correspondence from Dennis Sennaviva dated 6/10/2021. Multiple correspondence and comments dated May 11th, 2021, from David Sullivan P. Correspondence from Soli Engineering dated June 29th, 2021. Correspondence from Halcy Pearson &amp; Cassidy dated June 28th, 2021. Interdepartmental referral from our fire marshal, date of submission, March 4th, 2021. Memorandum from our environmental planner dated July 29th, 2021. Memorandum from our Department of Engineering dated July 30th, 2021. Correspondence from Halcy Pearson &amp; Cassidy, excuse me, dated August 4th, 2021. Memorandum from Aaron O'Hare, Environmental Planner, dated August 6th, 2021. And a site plan and wetlands application received August 5th, 2021. And email correspondence from Allison Kapaschinsky dated August 9th, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. If the applicant and/or its representative would introduce themselves and begin their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For your record, my name is Dennis Sennaviva. I'm an attorney with the Sennaviva Law Firm. I represent the owner and the applicant. With me in the audience is John Orsini, who's the sole member of that LLC. To my immediate right, Mr. Chairman, is Jim Cassidy, who's the project engineer from Halcy Pearson &amp; Cassidy, making the majority of the presentation this evening. And also, we have to his right, Matt Maldino, who is the traffic engineer from Soli Engineering to explain our traffic impact assessment. I'm going to give you an overview, as I do normally, Mr. Chairman, just tell you that the property is 46.45 acres in size. It's an assemblage of several parcels from a previous subdivision approved in 2002 for Northrop Industrial Park. Two cul-de-sacs were approved then as part of Northrop Industrial Park. The western cul-de-sac known as Northrop Industrial Park Road West has been developed, and the buildings are currently occupied. This proposed, this proposal merges the easterly parcels and the easterly cul-de-sac into this 146.45 acre parcel. It is all zoned IX. The assembled parcel is currently vacant. Now, the applicant proposes tonight to develop the assembled site with 1, 250,000 square foot building. It'd be together with associated automobile and truck parking and drive aisles, and Mr. Cassidy will go through the particulars of the engineering design for this application. Now, since Wallingford does not provide water or sewer, sanitary sewer services in this area, this plan before you calls for water service to be provided by the City of Meriden as it has been provided for all of the buildings on Northrop Industrial Park Road West. The site also requires an onsite sewage disposal system, again, with no sanitary sewer out there. Additionally, the plan, as Jim will explain in greater detail, ensures that all of the parking and loading areas drain to the underground infiltration system prior to discharging to adjacent wetlands. I should note, the applicant has received wetlands approval, and most recently, as Mr. Allison pointed out in the correspondence, there's, there is an administrative approval for a revision to the plan, which I want to talk about now. And that is, before I turn this over to Jim, I wanted to note that the applicant has proposed since the time of application, a significant change to the original plan. If you have read, and I'm sure you have, Exhibit 402-21L, which is the response to peer review comments by Soli Engineering dated June 29th. You may have noted that the applicant now proposes to widen Northrop Road the full distance of its frontage, which is about 850 feet, to a width of 30 feet. So that area, and I'm sure you've read the, the comments, there was a concern about how the road narrows. The applicant proposes to widen the road for that full 850 linear foot distance to 30 feet. In addition, there's a proposal to regrade an existing crest in the road, right around the area of our entrance, it's about four and a half feet, in order to improve sightlines, which will be a significant benefit to the site. And perhaps Matt will talk about the fact that this location has, is subject to a grant, a proposal to review the, the whole Northrop Road area, but this significant increase in, in road width is a, is a great benefit to that location. That activity, widening the road, puts some, puts some grading within 50 foot of a wetlands. And so we didn't have to go back to the Wetlands Commission. We did file for an administrative approval of that modest change, a very small area, and we received that late on Friday. So we're properly here before you, Mr. Chairman, with the wetlands approvals. Last, I just want to point out, and again, Mr. Orsini is here to comment on this tonight. Staff had inquired into possible tenants for the proposed building. I will tell you that the other buildings built in Northrop Industrial Park Road West, other than the Best Buy building, John built before he had tenants, and that's his, that's his MO here. He has a tendency to build buildings. He's a interesting gentleman. So he's building this. The anticipation is to find four or five tenants, similar to those occupying the western portion of Northrop Industrial Park. I have a letter from the broker, which I can submit as an exhibit, indicating that that's the sort of tenant they're looking for, and John is here to offer answers to any questions you might have. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to send this over to Mr. Cassidy, and he can make the formal part of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, my name is Jim Cassidy. I'm a professional engineer in principle with the firm Halcy Pearson &amp; Cassidy. My office is located at 630 Main Street in Cromwell, Connecticut. As Attorney Sennaviva had mentioned, we're here tonight representing 1070 North Farms Road LLC. John Orsini is a member of 1070 North Farms Road LLC. We're here before you seeking approval for the development of the site located at 1117 North Rup Road, and the second parcel is actually to North Rup Road Industrial Park East. We're seeking approval for the construction of a new 250,000 square foot warehouse and distribution facility. Little bit about the existing site, the first slide up is an existing photo, aerial photo of the property. As Dennis had mentioned, the overall site outlined in yellow on this plan consists of about 46.45 acres. It is zoned IX, industrial expansion district. You'll notice there's actually two sections of frontage along North Rup Road. On this particular photo, north is to your right, so the top portion is the west, the bottom is the east. So the frontage along the westily portion of North Rup Road on the right-hand side is about 940 feet, and then there's an additional section, section of frontage down to the bottom or to the east, about 862 feet of frontage. It is abutted on the west or the upper portion by five other industrial properties. Those are the properties that Dennis, or Attorney Sennaviva had mentioned, that Mr. Orsini owns. Those are industrial buildings that are within the North Rup Industrial Park Road West site. The very back one would be the best, the Best Buy site. There is a single residence that is circumference to the property towards the center of the frontage, and then off to the south or to the bottom, and off to the east is existing farmland. You'll see a, basically, right through the center of the property, you're going to see a gray line with a gray square, and then off to the bottom, you see another gray square. That area represents Helco right-of-way, it's 125 foot of Helco right-of-way that traverses through the property in east-west direction, so from the top down to the bottom. The one gray line you see going back up to North Road is remnants of a temporary access drive that Helco had when they were making some improvements to their infrastructure within that easement on this property. But the Helco right-of-way basically traverses the property in east-west direction. The property grades, I would say, are moderate. They tend to be at a grade of about 3% to 10%. They're basically, you're sloping in an east and west direction. There's a slight ridge running in the southerly direction down the center of the agricultural field you see in the upper portion of the property. And then from that slight ridge, everything slopes off in an east or west direction. Elevations on this property range from about 365 at a high down to about 340 at the low. You'll see some teal color areas on the property. There are several wetlands on this site. Those teal color areas or cyan color areas represent the wetlands. Both of those wetlands are flowing in a southerly direction, eventually discharging into Catlin Brook off to the south. The area to the, sorry, the area off to the west or to the top on this property is about 5.9 acres, and then the area on the bottom, or I'd say more towards the bottom center, is about 80 acres of wetlands. The property itself is not in a designated flood hazard zone. It's in a Zone X. As Dennis had said, this property is actually derived of, over the years, from a subdivision. In your package, we had included kind of a history of the property. The plan in the upper right-hand corner, or sorry, upper left-hand corner, is the property prior to it ever being subdivided. The upper portion of that map would be North Rup Road. Off on the far left, it'd be North Farms Road. In 2002, in June of 2002, it was subdivided into an industrial subdivision. The left-hand side of it, there was five lots created, one right at the corner of North Farms Road and North Rup Road, and then the small cul-de-sac that comes down through that left portion is North Rup, I'm sorry, yeah, North Rup Farms Industrial Park West, and there was four lots associated with that roadway. The area with the heavier black line around it is the property that we're talking about this evening. That property was actually subdivided into four lots. In addition to, there was a proposed roadway, that would have been North Rup Industrial Park East. Three of the lots would have been on that road, and then there would have been an additional lot off on North Rup Road on the far right-hand side. In May, on the bottom-left corner, in May of 2020, the property was merged.
Excuse me, could I just interrupt you for just a second? Can you have a laser pointer or anything? It may be a lot easier to follow this for everyone.
Sure, actually, I can direct right on, right on scram, sorry.
Sure, that's fine, thank you.
So again, this upper left-hand corner was the original property here. In 2002, it was subdivided, this map here. As I said, stated, this portion here was created, and there was one lot here at the corner of North Farms Road and North Rup Road. There was cul-de-sac constructed here. That's North Rup Industrial Park West, and then there are four lots on that road, one, two, three, and four lots on that road. Those lots are all developed. The piece that we're talking about this evening is this piece outlined in the heavy black line here. On that piece of property, there was four lots created. In addition to, there was North Rup Farm Industrial Park East, there was a right-of-way for that road located here. There are three lots that faced that roadway, and then there was an exist, another lot that would face North Farms Road. And, I'm sorry, North, North Rup Road, sorry. Since such time in May of 2002, they went back and they actually recombined, merged all the properties together, basically creating it into two lots. You have one lot here, which has the majority of the frontage on North Rup Road. The address of that property is actually to North Rup Industrial Park East, and then you had the remaining property here, that's actually the 1170 North Rup Road. As part of this application, we're proposing to combine everything back together, so you have one contiguous property outlined in red here. So that's what we're here before you tonight, for that piece of property consisting of the 46 acres altogether, 46.45. The proposal, as mentioned, was to develop the property with a new warehouse distribution facility. The building shown as the light brown rectangle in here has a total floor area of 250,000 square feet. Of that, we're proposing about 7,500 feet of it would be office, and then the remaining portion would be the warehouse and distribution facility. Access to the site would be off North Rup Road, which is here. We're proposing to bring a single access drive in here at the high point. This would provide access in, a single lane in. There'd be an island separating, sorry, there'd be an island separating. There's an island separating the in-lane, and then there'd be two outbound lanes, one would be a right turn, one would be a left turn. This driveway would circumference the entire building. If you were to go to the east or to the upper portion, this provides access to a loading area where tractor trailers would be able to back up. So this portion here would be the loading area where tractor trailers can back up. There's a total of 45 loading spaces in that area there. If you were to continue around, you would cross back under the CGLMP or Helco easement. There'd be some additional trailer spaces for storage to the rear, and then the driveway would continue down along the east side of the building, connecting with the main access drive. Off of these driveways, off of these driveways, there's going to be three parking areas. There's a parking area to the front or to the north of the building. There's an additional parking area off to the east, down in the bottom portion of the page, and then there's another small parking area to the rear of the south of the building. We tried to divide up the parking, because as was mentioned, we're possibly looking at getting multiple tenants in this building. The building is right presently set up for about three tenants, so it'd probably be a split of about 50,000, 100,000, 100,000 is what we're prospectively looking at at this point. We have a total of 109 parking space, or sorry, 209 parking spaces on this site. Per year's zoning requirements, we are required for a distribution use, required to provide one space per every 1,500 square feet, which requires a total 167 spaces. Based upon prospective tenants' needs for the, what we're looking for for this building, we felt that about 209 would be appropriate, based upon other users that we've been talking to for this building. Next photo is just the site plan overlaid on today's aerial photo to get and give you a context of where it is in relation to everything else. So it's located more towards the west side of the property, up near the other industrial buildings. It is situated in between the wetlands area. As Dennis had mentioned, we did receive wetlands approval for the project. We are proposing no direct impacts to the wetlands associated with this project. In addition to, on this plan, you'll notice two darker blue areas. We have an extensive stormwater management system as part of this project. It's going to be temperamental tonight, I'm sorry. What we have, sorry. Okay, there you go. Okay. Sorry, it's kind of mind of its own tonight. Not even touching it. Excuse me a second here, I don't know why it wants to do this. I apologize. As I mentioned, we have an extensive stormwater management plan. Part of this plan, we have two surface detention basins. The dark blue area to the front of the property is our first stormwater basin. It's an infiltration basin. It will basically be a small depression. There'll be a lawn area. It is not a wet bottom basin, so it'll be maintained as a lawn. To the rear, there's also another detention basin on the far south, located here. And then this is another basin that picks up a portion of the drive area. As Dennis had mentioned, you'll see two blue rectangles underneath the parking lot. Those are two underground infiltration systems. The one to the upper portion or up to the east is a system that picks up the majority of the roof leaders from the building. The one, smaller one, to the bottom picks up the front portion of the building, the roof leaders for the front portion of the building. We did build an extensive stormwater model and report as part of this project. We find, post-development, with all the stormwater measurements. We find, post-development with all the stormwater measures in place, that you should see no increase in flows as it discharges down off the south end of the property or the left end of the property towards Catlin Brook. In addition to, these systems are designed to treat what we call the first inch of runoff or first flush of runoff. The first flush of runoff typically carries your pollutants such as salt and sand that's used for winter application or winter ice melt. And any oils that may drip out of vehicles is treated before it's allowed to discharge onto the adjoining wetlands area. So as I mentioned, I'm not gonna bore you with all the drainage, but quickly, this is just a post-development drainage area map. The green area is going to the underground infiltration system off on the upper portion of the property. The blue area is going to the smaller underground system underneath the parking lot on the east or the lower portion of the parking lot. All the orange area goes to the stormwater basin out to the front of the property. And all the yellow area is discharging off to the stormwater basin out to the rear of the property. Typical cross-sections of the basins themselves, what will happen is, this is a cross-section through the basin. So your far-left side is where the pipe is entering. The darker blue area is the volume of water that would be in the bottom of the basin that's allowed to infiltrate back into the ground. The light blue area is the area that would be able to discharge through our outlet structure. From our outlet structure, it discharges through an outlet pipe, then onto the adjoining wetlands. So that darker blue area is the water that we're treating in the bottom of the basin for stormwater quality. As Dennis had mentioned, as part of this project, we are proposing some improvements to Northrup Road. This is our frontage along Northrup Road. The upper portion here is our access driveway. What we're looking at doing is basically reconstructing a portion of Northrup Road from here. If anybody's been out there, you would see an existing gravel access drive. That's that access drive that I showed you that CLMP was using. So about a hundred feet prior to that, that's where we're gonna actually start our road improvement. The overall improvement goes about nine-hundred feet, ending in this location here. Two things are gonna happen. The majority of that section of the road is about twenty-four feet wide right now. We're gonna be widening about eight-hundred feet of it to about thirty feet wide. And the first hundred feet would be a taper from the existing width of the road up to that thirty feet wide. So this section here is going to be your tapered section of roadway. In addition to, if anyone's driven through there, what you'll notice is there's a vertical crest. The vertical crest obstructs the sightline. So on this plan, the green line up on the top is the existing grade along the profile of the road. As Dennis had mentioned, when we do our work, we're gonna actually drop the grade, drop that crest in the road approximately three to four feet, which represents that red line. Not only does it improve the sightline for our site access driveway, but if anyone's driving along there, there's a little bit of a blind spot as you come over the hump. And sure, Matt will talk to it a little bit about how it helps improve the sightline as you go along Northrup Road. In addition to, in that area, as Dennis had mentioned, we'll be extending the water main down through that section. So we figured that's a good opportunity to do this improvement, to make this improvement. Seeing we had to rip up the road and allow us to regrade it and make this improvement all at the same time. As part of our original submission, we did submit a sightline demonstration plan. On this plan, the blue lines on the profile on the bottom represent a tractor-trailer, what would be required, which is about seven-hundred-and-forty feet of sightline. So this is the original design. And you can see with that blue line, there was no ground in the profile obstructing it. The green line below it represents the sightline required for a passenger vehicle. For a passenger vehicle, looking off in the eastbound direction, I believe we need a total of four-hundred-and-sixty-three for design speed of forty-two miles an hour, and then looking off to the west, we needed a total of five-hundred-and-seven. We were able to achieve it with the original design, but we did have to do some regrading of the shoulder, which is in this area here. Fast forward, now we've actually are proposing to repave the roadway, widen the roadway and drop the grade. So the whole cross-stitch area on this plan is actually getting dropped. So all it does is, for a site drive, makes the site distance actually that much more better. That whole cross-stitch area is coming out. So we have more than adequate sightline for this proposed development, for both tractor-trailers and passenger vehicles. We did submit an extensive erosion and sediment control plan as part of the application. It was reviewed by the Wetlands Commission. Just so everyone's aware, what will happen is the E and S measures will be handled in two phases. There is a phase one, which deals with the initial grading, then the actual development, which is phase two. There'll be an E and S plan associated with that also. We also submitted a landscaping plan as part of the package. We did go through all the requirements of the landscaping regulations and found that we meet and exceed. We'll be planting a series of street trees along the entire frontage, about intervals of about every fifty feet. There are about fifteen islands within the parking lot that will also have some canopy trees in it. Then there'll be foundation plantings along the entire frontage also. So we believe we meet and exceed all the requirements of the landscaping regulations also. We also did submit a site photometrics plan, which is this plan I have up here. All the red dots on the plan represent the location of the light fixtures that would be around the site. There would be poles on a concrete base, the poles will be at a height of twenty-five feet. And then there will be wall-mounted lights on the building also. Based upon the calculations we prepared for this, and one of the beauties of this is we're so far from the prompting lines that we have no spillage of light onto adjoining properties. All the light fixtures will be dark sky compliant, high-energy efficient LED fixtures also. This is a floor plan for the building. As mentioned, presently it's broken up into three spaces. So right now it's broken up into a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand square foot space, and then a fifty thousand square foot space at the end for the total of two-fifty. As I mentioned, there's a total of seventy-five-hundred square feet of office. So each area has about a twenty-five-hundred square foot office within it presently. BL companies had prepared a rendering of the proposed building. This would be the site that you would face as you come up Northrup Road, headed in a westerly direction. The overall building height is gonna be forty feet. It is a steel building. It's very similar to all the other buildings that Mr. Rossini has built in his office park or in his industrial park off to the west. There would be storefront glass on the office portion of it. You will notice some windows in the upper section. There are no, there is no second floor in the building. That is just to let natural light into the warehouse space that's beyond. But this is a preliminary plan of the building that is proposed for this site. And then we also have a couple renderings for the proposed building to give you a feel for what this building would look like. So this would be the front right corner of the building as you approach it from Northrup Road. Again, the overall building height is about forty feet. So I just wanna go back one slide, hopefully I still have it in here, and it won't be as temperamental this time. Obviously doesn't like the photos. So zoning requirements. So as part of the package, we obviously provided a zoning table, that's what I'm trying to get to here. So, this is what I was trying to get to. So this is the overall zoning table that's provided in the plan. I just like to, usually like to go over briefly just to make sure everyone, so you know, where are those zoning requirements and how we comply with everything. In this particular case, we easily meet and exceed all the different requirements. Again, we are in the IX zone. Your minimum lot area for the IX zone is two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand square feet. We're almost ten times that, we're over two-million-twenty, twenty-three thousand square feet. Frontage requirement is two-hundred-and-fifty, we're at nine-hundred-and-thirty-nine point two-five, just for the westerly most portion. That doesn't even include the eastern portion. Front yard setback is another thing I wanted to go through. The typical front yard setback requirement is sixty feet. That's for a building with thirty feet in height. You're allowed to go up the higher building up to forty feet, which we are proposing. But we need to add five feet for every additional one-foot building height. So in this particular case, we need to be a hundred-and-ten feet from the road. Our closest point is a hundred-and-eighteen point five-eight. Side yards, thirty feet on each side. We're at two-hundred-and-five to the east, and we're at a hundred-and-sixty-five point three, I'm sorry, two-hundred-and-ninety-five, two-hundred-point-nine-five to the west. And then a hundred-and-sixty-five point three-two to the east. Rear yard, again, we have a helco right-of-way, keeps us pretty far from that rear yard. We need to have fifty feet minimum. We're at seven-hundred-and-seventy point nine-one. The building height is allowed to be thirty with up to forty with the increased front yard setback. So we're at forty feet with this proposal. Building coverage, we're allowed to be at twenty-five. We're at twelve-point-three-six percent, so we're only halfway to, or about half of what's actually allowed. Open space, this is a minimum requirement, we need to provide a minimum of thirty-five percent. Presently, we have seventy-five point oh-six. As I mentioned, with parking, based upon the warehouse distribution use, the parking ratio is one space per fifteen-hundred square feet of gross floor area. We have a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet requiring a hundred-and-sixty-seven spaces. We are requesting to have two-hundred-and-nine, nine of which would be handicap spaces that are evenly distributed throughout the site. Within the parking lot itself, we are required to have landscape islands. This table was based upon our original proposal where we had two-hundred-and-fifty spaces, which required one, sorry, ten square foot each space for a total of twenty-five-hundred square feet. I did not change the table. We are providing twenty-six-hundred-and-thirty. So actually, at this point, based upon the reduced number of parking spaces, we only need two-thousand-and-ninety. But we still meet and well exceed the overall requirement. The final requirement was loading spaces. We are required to have one space for the first twenty-five-hundred square feet, I'm sorry, from twenty-five to forty-nine-hundred square feet, and then one additional space for every twenty-four-hundred, twenty-five-hundred square feet there above. So based upon our calculations, we need a total of eleven loading spaces. We're at forty-five loading spaces altogether. So I think we meet and exceed all the requirements of the zoning regulations. I will note that we did receive staff comments from planning, engineering. We've addressed hopefully all the staff comments at this point. I did provide review letters or response letters to each one of those comments. And if need be, I can go over those with the commission. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Matt. Hopefully he has a little better luck with his portion of the presentation. I think it's because this is warm in here, it's being a little temperamental.
Good evening, commission members. For the record, my name is Matt Baldino again, with Soli Engineering, office located at five-oh-one Main Street in Monroe, Connecticut. Soli Engineering completed a traffic impact assessment for the proposed development, which analyzed the adjacent roadway network and four intersections, three of which are signalized, in accordance with all of the Town of Wallingford requirements, as well as standard traffic engineering methodology. Just to kind of orient everyone here, the three intersections located on the bottom of your screen there were the study area intersections which are signalized, which three intersections located down there are the intersections of Route sixty-eight. The first one over to your left there is Barnes Road, Route sixty-eight, and Northrup Road, which extends down towards our property up to the north, as well as the intersection of Miles Drive down to the south. The other two intersections are the intersections with Barnes Road, Route sixty-eight, and Interstate ninety-one, northbound and southbound ramps. For any traffic study, the first thing we want to look at is the existing conditions. And to do that, we collected journey movement count data during September of two thousand and twenty, then coordinated with CTDOT to adjust based on the travel patterns reflective of, as those counts were conducted during COVID, to adjust those to pre-COVID conditions to establish a baseline of the conditions that are out there today. Once establishing the existing conditions, we then want to look at the conditions of the roadway in the future year, of which the development will be completed. And to do that, we assumed a one-percent growth rate throughout that time, as well as included the traffic associated with nearby developments located at Five Research Parkway, which was on the agenda earlier today, as well as the development associated with eight-fifty Murdoch Avenue, which is located just north of our site here today. Once analyzing that, the existing conditions, then establishing the background conditions, we then looked at the trips to be generated by the proposed development. To do this, we used data published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, I T E Trip Generation Manual, in accordance with all standard traffic engineering methodology. Based on the proposed warehouse distribution center, the proposed trips to be generated by the proposed development is forty-three new trips during the AM peak hour and forty-eight new trips during the PM peak hour. The peak hour of the adjacent street traffic occurred between seven-fifteen and eight-fifteen in the weekday morning, then at four-fifteen to five-fifteen during the weekday evening peak hours. Again, those are the peak hours of the adjacent street traffic along Barnes Road, as those were the greatest potential for impact with this with the study period. Typically, a traffic study is conducted whenever the, with guidance from the DOT, wherever a development is anticipated to generate a hundred or more new trips at any of the signalized intersections. So as you can see, we're well below fifty trips during the peak hours of the adjacent street traffic. However, we did complete this traffic study as well to provide additional analysis of the roadway network. As mentioned, the proposed development, as mentioned, these intersections are located on a state route. And due to the size of this development, a permit will be required from the Office of State Traffic Authority, an OSTDA permit, which will then review the traffic associated with this development and look at those adjacent signalized intersections down to the south. However, with our traffic study, we did note that there is no additional roadway improvements that are required to accommodate the proposed traffic associated with this development. And as Jim mentioned earlier, the proposed development does include widening along Northrup Road in the vicinity of the project to accommodate, to increase the sightlines, as well as to allow for truck circulation into and outside of the site. We have received comments from SLR, in which we have provided a written response to those comments addressing all of those items with them. Prior to this evening's meeting, with that, I will pass the presentation back to Jim Cassidy, and I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the traffic associated with this project.
I think I'll take that, Mr. Chairman. That's basically the presentation. I know that you have your
That's basically the presentation. I know that you have your, the town has retained an independent peer reviewer of the traffic. I know they're here tonight. They were, again, kind enough to provide a, an assessment, a peer review for the, for the commission that's been shared with us. And I, and again, Soli Engineering has responded to that. The primary benefit, if you will, Mr. Chair, is the fact that this plan does have the widening of Northrop Road along that frontage, which I think is a substantial improvement along with reducing that crest in the road. So I just wanted to read, because I had mentioned, I forgot to offer it as an exhibit. We have a letter from C B R E. It's the realtor handling the leasing of this site for Mr. Orsini. And it's a letter dated July 26th. I will offer it, Mr. Chair. It just says that it's the intent as the leasing agent to focus our attention on attracting classic warehouse users looking to locate in the center of the state and acknowledges that, acknowledges they have Best Buy warehouse, they have Goodyear Tire, Court Business Services, the sort of, he calls them clean warehouse users that require normal auto and trailer parking. So that's the sort of tenant. Mr. Orsini is here to answer any questions that the commission may have. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I think we're complete with our presentation.
Good enough. Thank you very much. Before I go to commission members and, and our staff, I believe we have a representative from SL, SLR here. Is that correct? Is it Mr. Sullivan or some other individual?
I'm not David.
Sir, excuse me, sir, if you'd like to, you could either stand or if you'd like to sit at, at the, at the table to my right, you're certainly welcome to do that too. There's a microphone there. If you just, please turn it on.
Hello? Hello? My name is Carl Giordano from SLR. I'm here with my colleague Neil Olinsky. Dave Sullivan couldn't be here tonight, so we're in his place. So we were asked by the town to do the peer review, as mentioned. And we provided 16 comments to Soli. And by and large, they were, for the vast majority, addressed and taken care of, or the other ones were not very consequential. The big items have been discussed, such as, one of the comments that we provided were concerns with the sightlines. And to that response, Soli and Soli Engineer provided the sightline plan and profile showing that the sightlines will be sufficient with the proposed regrading. Another major comment worth discussing was, was the matter of the traffic studies treating of the proposed development as a traditional warehouse. And it looks like by discussion that the applicant has discussed with potential tenants or certain uses that are consistent with the traditional warehouse use that was assumed in the study. So we felt that that was sufficiently addressed as well. Vehicle tracking diagrams were also provided. We had commented that there were concerns with truck turns and that it should be shown that the trucks should be able to sufficiently turn safely. And WB 67 truck turn diagrams were provided. And as discussed, with the widening along the site frontage to 30 feet, the turning radii were shown to be sufficient. And in the site plan, it was shown that a mountable turning radius was added, further improving turning for truck maneuverability. Another comment that we had made was the potential for spot improvements along Northrop Road, noting the narrow widths at several points along the roadway. And it looks like the SCROG study has been initiated that will further study on those other areas that are not along the site frontage and will be addressed in that study. So we felt that that response was sufficient as well. I believe the last comment worth noting was in regard to intersection traffic operations at the study intersections. And while, for the most part, the development looks like it would not have a notable impact on traffic operations, there were one or two locations where there were level of service degradations, level of service being a measure of quality of traffic operations. In one location, there was a movement at Barnes Road at the I-91 northbound ramps. The eastbound left movement did degrade from a level of service E to F. There was one other location that, that did degrade from level of service D to E at the Barnes Road, Northrop Road, eastbound left turn. The other, the other locations were inconsequential to overall traffic operations at those locations. That summarizes my comments. Feel that the rest of the comments were, were very sufficient.
Thank you. Could you go into a little bit, when you mentioned there was a degradation of a couple of the intersections, could you go into, into that a little bit more specifically? And just if there was any response or from the applicant as far as how to address that?
So sure, what I was referencing was the worst, the worst one that I mentioned was at Barnes Road at the I-91 northbound ramps, the eastbound left turn onto, onto the ramp. That left turn movement was shown in the appendix materials to degrade from a level of service E to F. It did look like there were some...
Could you, excuse me, could you say that it was the, the northbound, it was the left turn, so heading west, is that correct?
Eastbound.
It was a northbound ramp?
Correct.
So if it's a north, if it's a northbound ramp, if you're going east, you'd make a right, wouldn't you?
Northbound on ramp, going eastbound, turning left onto the northbound on ramp? Yeah, I believe on the easternmost intersection circled, that left turn movement there.
Getting on, oh, I'm sorry.
Correct. That was the most significant impact to any movement, traffic movement that we, we saw in there. And like I mentioned, the other one noteworthy location was Barnes Road at Northrop Road, eastbound left turn there, not quite as, as poor a level of service. But I, with the proposed development, it did show level of service D to E. And we just wanted to, to note that if there were any sort of improvements that could be potentially made with the signal timings, you know, there's always the possibility that it could be improved and fixed. So it's, it doesn't show that. Wondering if that was something that could have been looked into.
Thank you. Any commission members with questions for our peer reviewer? Mr. Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really have just one question on the traffic as far as, you know, they mentioned 43 AM trips, 48 PM trips. Are those cars? Are those trucks? Are those combination?
Those were the combination. Would you like to?
Yes. And, and, you know, can you break it down a little farther as far as, you know, specifics?
I don't have the specifics, but I can, we can definitely provide that information. It is assumed that the truck percentage is actually pretty low during the peak hour of the adjacent street traffic. Typically, most of those, again, trucks kind of don't want to be on the roadway at those times. It is assumed though that all of the truck traffic exiting the site will exit right out of the site towards the highway ramps. The truck percentages were adjusted during the build condition to reflect an additional truck volume on the roadway network.
Okay. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Other commission members? Mr. Heim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Questions I have, I think, are primarily meant for Mr. Giordano. You said that the 91 northbound on ramp heading eastbound on, on Barnes Road went from a level of service E to F. In layman's terms, what does that mean? I mean, what's the everyday effect of that?
So that kind of correlates to an amount of delay or inconvenience that a driver experiences at the light waiting to, to make that turn for the, for the traffic signal. So I think there was a, I think the appendix material showed a degree of maybe 10 or 12 seconds of increase at that movement. And it kind of, and the corresponding delay corresponds to a certain category and, in level of service. And it was, without the development, it showed it was level of service E. And then those additional seconds of delay and driver inconvenience pushed it to the threshold of level of service F. So that's, it's just, it's a higher category of driver delay.
Okay. And then, you know, in school, I, you know, I always thought of, you know, any, any grade low as a C as being unacceptable or undesirable. Can you tell me, I mean, do the grade, the level of service grades kind of work the same way here?
In no way. Typically, level of service D and in, in some cases, E is, is considered acceptable. Typically, A to D is the range that you look for. E can be okay. And F is kind of an area that we would want to look at, seeing if there's room for improvement.
Okay.
So on that note, I can provide a little more context there. So we are showing an increase of 11.8 seconds of delay on that individual left turn movement. But I did want to, to want to kind of bring to everyone's attention also, in the revised material that we did submit, those, that does account for, it was, we were given the direction to also account for the trips associated with Five Research Parkway. And one of those improvements associated with that development was actually the restriping of the off ramp to provide, right now it is dual lefts with a right turn lane. As part of that, those improvements, they were going to restripe that to provide one exclusive left and then the middle lane would be left and right turn. And then there would also be a right turn lane. So, so some of the increase in delay that is experienced there is, is that lane is now also serving as the right turn lane as well in that condition, in the background in the build, it is reflective of, of the improvements as well. But this is something that we will definitely look at with the DOT as we permit it through the O S D A. They will review all of the materials as part of that application and look at the, the timing improvements associated as necessary.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Baldini is?
Baldino.
Oh, Baldino. There was, you mentioned, you know, some of the changes in timing and stuff for the lights. Did you, did you yourself or your firm actually take a look at changing the timing on any of those lights? Or do any of those computations?
And that's something we can look into further. There's, there's some timing operations that can be, can be made to adjust that, that specific, that specific individual movement. But I did want to note that the overall intersection is only increasing in less than three seconds of delay experienced by all drivers at that intersection. So, so with those improvements, we can, we can look at improving that specific movement off the ramps. And that is definitely something the DOT will look at as that is an exit off of the state highway.
Okay. But just to be clear, you haven't looked at that?
We have not identified any specific improvements at this time for that.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you. And then, back to Mr. Giordano. At the end of the applicant's traffic study, there is a statement that is made. Actually, the, the second to last sentence says, there is no indication that the proposed development will have an adverse impact on the roadway network. Is that something that you, as a peer reviewer, having reviewed their submission and their study, is that a statement that you agree with?
Yeah. So when we, when we make those statements, it's, it's what Matt was describing, that looking at the overall intersection, looking at the overall approaches, what that, those one or two spots wouldn't necessarily make us decide that, you know, there is an adverse impact if there's a way that we can improve it. So that, so that is just kind of a spot where we would like to see if there is something that can make it a little bit better. But overall, it wouldn't be an adverse impact.
Okay. Would it be fair to say that you have a couple areas that you think they can be improved, but overall, no adverse impact as a result of this development?
Yeah, I, I think so. Like I said, if the, if that, those one or two locations could be tweaked with, while going through the process with DOT, that, that would be ideal.
Last set of questions I have is, do you have any concern that some of these intersections are already operating at a D to E level of service? And then you're adding on a, you know, another warehouse with some... I hesitate to say significant because it's, it's less than 100 peak hour trips. But do you have any concern as to adding this traffic to intersections that are already operating at the D to E level?
So it, it's with the, so the way that the analysis is done is there's an existing conditions and then there's a background conditions where the other projects at Five Research Parkway and the Murdoch Avenue were added on to that. And that's the second scenario. Then the third scenario is with the proposed, proposed project. And those each have kind of a bit by bit impact on the intersections. You know, it's, it's tough to say, you know, is it, is it going to? It wouldn't be correct to say that it would, it would like break an intersection. These tend to be conservative analyses. So based on what we've looked at, those one or two spots are the only real room for improvement areas. And that's what I, what I would have to say for that. So, based on what we've looked at, those one or two spots are the real, only real room for improvement areas. And that's what I, what I would have to say for that.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Before I go to other commission members, just to, you know, pick up, when you were talking about the extended delay on the, for the northbound, for the northbound ramp, does that impact at all the stacking?
The queuing?
The, yeah, the queuing on the, on 68.
That's not something that we looked into. I can't really comment to that.
Sure. I guess perhaps the applicant could, I'm not sure what the, you know, what the, the length is of that, you know, of the, the stacking for that, for that turn.
So, just to make sure we're on the same page here, so the, between the two signalized intersections to the interstate ramps, correct?
Yeah. What I, well, what I'm looking at is just at the light, that the light at the northbound ramp, because that's the intersection that we're talking about that has, that's, the delay is changing. And so, just my question is, with that delay, does that cause any problem with traffic that's waiting to make the left turn onto 91 North?
So, these intersections actually operate on a coordinated network, meaning that they all kind of interact with one another on the roadway network. So, the queuing associated with the easternmost intersection there is, is also controlled by the intersections before it. So, we, we did look at the, the queuing associated with that, but the queuing at that intersection and that eastbound approach is, is metered by the intersections prior to it as well. So, so any, I don't have the exact numbers of any increase, but that is something we can, we can look into. But again, it's really controlled by the intersections upstream as well.
So, is your answer, you're not sure, yes or no?
Again, so since it's metered, it's, it's, again, the, the impact kind of from the intersection before it, I just see, I think we have the numbers here specifically at that approach and the eastbound approach.
Do you know what the queuing lane is for the, for that left turn? The length?
So, there's about 640 feet on the eastbound approach, pretty much extends back to the intersection prior. Again, so, yeah, the, the queuing under the existing conditions extends on the eastbound approach through to the other intersection, through the whole, full 640 feet in both the no build condition as well as the build condition. Then, the queuing on the southbound approach, we did discuss that as, there is a minor increase in queue on that approach as well, kind of carrying back through.
No, again, I understand that.
I don't have the specific answer.
Yes, that's, that's why I should drive. You don't have a specific answer, though? Is that correct?
I do not have the specific queue increase, but we can provide that information to you.
Okay. I appreciate that. All right. Moving on to other commission members with questions. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Allenson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Quick question for Mr. Giordano. I'm looking at, it's our exhibit marked 402-21L. It's the response to your comments from Solly Engineering. I'm specifically looking at, it looks like response 14, where it talks about capacity analysis, which is what I think some of the questions have been going on about. And it seems to rely on data that may or may not occur from another build, which is reliant on the state of Connecticut, on OSTA applications, et cetera, et cetera. So, I think you, you went into a significant amount as far as what would occur if the state did everything that all applicants want them to do. What if they do nothing?
Sorry. Could you rephrase that? I don't understand.
So...
If the state does nothing?
If the state makes no improvements in the intersection area, what would that do to the traffic? How far would it degrade? Because it seems that your numbers here and the comments back and forth have included if the improvements occurred, but I didn't see the data if they did not occur.
At the, are you looking specifically at the signalized intersections?
Comment number 14 says, "During the PM peak hour at the I-91 north, northbound ramps intersection, the westbound through movement worsens from LOS E to LOS F, an increase in 15 to 20 seconds of delay. However, a degradation in LOS of this scale seems high with only 16 total site trips." And then, it goes on to say, "Synchro output sheets should be provided." The response from Solly Engineering says, "Traffic assessment has been revised to include the traffic value, volumes and signal improvements associated with the proposed Five Research Parkway project." And then, goes on to provide data regarding those improvements. What I'm asking is, both of your comments seem to include the data from the Five Research Parkway improvements, which would be OSTA improvements. If those did not occur, where would that put us?
So, yeah, I did, looking through the, the analysis, the, like you mentioned, the Five Research Parkway signal timings, timing improvements associated with that, it looks like they were implemented, which included some cycle length adjustments and maybe some split adjustments, a little bit technical. But I, I guess Matt may be able to, to speak to this a little bit better, but this, I guess this analysis assumes the most conservative scenario where the traffic associated with that Five Research Parkway development and the mitigation with that is, is carried through the scenarios we're comparing.
On that note, so I just want to clarify. So, to, the traffic study dated March 3rd, which was originally submitted, did not include the traffic associated with Research Parkway. So, we did show that there was no adverse impact to the roadway network without the traffic as well as the roadway improvements associated with the Five Research Parkway. That did still include the traffic associated with 850 Murdoch Avenue, which was already approved and under construction. So, we, we did demonstrate kind of both avenues with and without the trips associated with the Five Research. The most recent submission did include those trips to provide a conservative analysis. While, while we were discussing, I did look into the queue length of the eastbound approach. Again, like I said, because it is metered by the other intersection, the queue length is controlled ultimately by that, that intersection. So, the queue length only increases from 457 feet to 477 feet, only a two-foot increase associated with that. And to clarify what I had previously mentioned, again, it is metered by the other ones, so it is controlled by it, but it does not extend through the 640 feet of queue that is actually available there.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And I just wanted to make sure I was reading the data correctly. The other thing, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I don't want any of my comments to be construed as, as a guess. We just don't know what the state's going to do. And that's all, the only reason for my line of questioning. Thank you.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commission members? At this point in time, Mr. Peggini, any comments on the, on the application?
No, I have no further comments at this time. I think they've addressed pretty much all of my concerns, so.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on the application? Any member of the public would like to speak on the application? Please come forward, state your name and address and your comments. Seeing none, I'll first bring it back to just any commission members if they've had any final comments that they would like to make or actually final questions that they'd like to have for the applicant. And seeing none, as far as the applicant, certainly the app, yes, Mr. Cohen.
I'll make a couple extra comments.
Sure.
I think, I think the project is a good project. I do happen to run by the site many times during the week, and I know exactly how the road improvements are going to help me as a runner. I will admit that truck drivers are pretty, pretty good over there, so I expect the same from this development. I do think that basically this is a minimal increase in traffic. And I do think without the application on Five Research, you know, this, you know, would have really no impact. We really wouldn't be even talking about the traffic on this application. You know, it's just one of those odd circumstances where, you know, the combination of applications does make this difficult to figure out, quite frankly. And I will echo Mr. Allison's comments where, you know, we're relying on OSTA to make a lot of these improvements, to make things work. But for your specific application, you know, I, I think it's got, got really minimal impact on, on the traffic situation, and I would support it.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. I'd offer the applicant, if you'd like to make any final comments on the application before I entertain a motion to close the public hearing, certainly you're not compelled to, but if you'd like to, feel free.
I'll make a quick, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to point out, and I think it's to Commissioner Cohen's point, you know, we were instructed to consider in the traffic study the, the impact of Five Research Parkway, which is unusual, as this commission knows. Normally, we consider those projects that have already been approved and included in that analysis so that it does, at the end of the day, I think one of the comforts that we have for this project is, A, it's not a large traffic generator, and B, there's going to be another set of eyes besides our team, the peer review, it's got to go to DOT.
Thank you. I guess with that, if there's no further comments from commission members, the applicant, Mr. Peggini, has all said at this point in time, I'd entertain a motion to close our public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for application 402-21, 1070 North Farms Road LLC.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Allison, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Move down the road.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, at this point in time, I would entertain a motion on the application, or if any commission members would like to make any comments prior to voting on the application. Yes, at this point in time, I certainly would echo Mr. Cohen's comments. I think as far as the, the amount of traffic is being generated, projected to be generated from this application is, you know, is rather, rather small. Certainly, I think it's a benefit as far as what the applicants doing, as far as doing the, the road widening as well, or the roadway improvements as well as cutting down on the, on the slope on the road. Also, looking at some of the other properties in that general area, the warehouse properties that Mr. Orsini has, you know, has constructed, certainly, I think those are, have been attractive properties, and I would certainly expect this one to, to be the same. Again, any other commission members with any comments? Yeah?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Before motion, due you to Mr. Peggini. Should we require any type of, you know, construction bond or any?
Yes, that was something I was going to bring up because they currently have a special permit for excavation and fill right now. There's just some issues to be worked on, whether we could transfer some of that bond to this project. So, I think something in the effect of, you know, the, the bond amount to be determined at a later time.
Okay. Thank you.
So, at this point in time, if there's no other comments from commission members, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve application 402-21, 1070 North Farms Road LLC, special permit for 1070 North Farms Road LLC for a 250,000 square foot distribution warehouse and associated 209 parking spaces located at 1117 North Rip Road and 2 North Rip Industrial Park Road East, as shown on the plans entitled, proposed 25,000, 250,000 square foot warehouse distribution building, dated September 29th, 2020, and revised to August 5th, 2021, subject to the following conditions of approval. One, comments of town engineer Allison Kapasinski to Planning and Zoning Commission dated July 30th, 2021, and April 28th, 2021. Comments of the fire marshal in interdepartmental referral dated 3/11/2021 and 7/2, 2021. Comments of Eric Kruger, senior engineer, water and sewer department, in inter-office memorandum dated 4/8/2021. And property address of merged lots to be attained from the building department before final maps are submitted, and any permits, including zoning and special permits issued. Final plans with new address should also be accompanied with the new deed. And last, bond to be determined from previous excavation application.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. I, I think as far as the, the date, the revision date of the, of the plans, I believe that should be August 4th. At least the plans I have showed revised August 4th, 2021.
Yes, that's correct.
So, I, I think if we would make a correction on that, please.
Okay. Men the motion to specify plan of August 4th instead of August 5th, 2021.
Thank you. We have a motion on the application. Do we have a, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hein, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes, your application's been approved. Have a good evening, gentlemen. Brings us up to our next order of business, which is a zoning text amendment, section 4.9b, 10, and section 6.11c, Small Animals Surgical Services of Connecticut LLC. Again, Mr. Allison, if you would please note all correspondence for the record, and if the applicant would please come forward to begin preparing for his or her presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a legal notice, number 50121, zoning regulation text amendment for White to add section 4.9b.13 and to modify section 6.11c to the Wallingford zoning regulations to allow outpatient small animal surgical facilities as a permitted use in the industrial expansion IX district. We have an application for a zoning regulation change dated June 10th, 2021. We have correspondence from attorney Jim Lachlan dated July 30th, 2021. We have correspondence from Kevin Peggini, town planner, dated July 14th, 2021. We have correspondence from the South Central Connecticut Regional Planning Commission, signed by Jeffrey Cohen, dated July 12th, 2021. We have an interdepartmental referral from our senior engineer, date of submission, June 11th, 2021. We have an interdepartmental referral from our town engineer, date of submission, June 11th, 2021. And we have an interdepartmental referral from our fire marshal, dated June 11th, 2021. I believe that is all.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. If the applicant and/or its representative, please introduce themselves and begin their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Jim Lachlin, an attorney here in town. My office is on North Main Street in Wallingford. As you know already, this is a proposal to change the zoning regulation. It's a text amendment affecting the IX zone. We're looking to add the use of a outpatient small animal surgical center. With me is Christine White. She is one half of the husband-wife team that... She is one half of the husband-wife team that runs the business. She and her husband have been doing it for decades now, on a referral basis, where they go to different animal hospitals for their surgeries, strictly on a referral basis, strictly small animals. And they're looking for one place for their business where they can stay. Um, it will be good for Wallingford, it will be good for them as well. It'll continue on a referral basis only. I would ask you to consider closely the initial application that came with my letter on June eleventh. That explains a lot of the detail of their business. And of course, the legal notice was published in the Record Journal. And finally, my submittal with my letter dated July thirtieth. Initially, the application was to add section thirteen to four point nine of the regulation, along with providing for parking in six eleven. In talking with Kevin, um, he proposed that a definition of outpatient small animal surgical facility would be a good addition, and I agreed. Speaking with both him and Janice, Small Corporation Council, both of them concur, confirm that we don't need to re-trigger the polit, the, the procedure of contacting the regional authority and also re-noticing, because adding a definition is just incidental to the application. I reviewed the staff comments, I reviewed comments from other departments, I contacted the fire marshal's office. Their concern of having plans isn't at this point, it's more of just notice to the applicant that when the time comes, they're gonna need to submit floor plans for approval by the fire marshal's office. If you look at my letter from July thirtieth, I think the most important part is the definition of what an outpatient small animal surgical facility is. It will focus on surgery, a referral basis surgery. Domesticated animals, predominantly dogs and cats, small, you won't see animals or camels or giraffes. All activity will be done indoors at all times, except of course, when animals need to do what animals do, there will be a supervised walk, um, in a designated area on the outside. Um, and if overnight stays are required, it happens rarely, it would have to be incidental to and necessary as a result of the surgery that occurred. There will be no kennels, there will be no long-term stays, it will just be short-term stays necessary as a result of surgery. The parking, just looking at the reg, I got the vibe that this outpatient small animal surgical facility is akin to the medical office, the outpatient medical treatment facility already provided for in the IX zone, and that's where I borrowed, or that's where I took from, saying that one space for every two hundred fifty square feet would suffice. And if anything, I think there will be less traffic, less parking necessary, as are also the issues, as opposed to the human, uh, medical treatment facility, because this will just be for surgeries and small animals. The reason why we're looking to go into the IX zone with this use is because we want more of a professional atmosphere, as opposed to the commercial atmosphere. The Whites won't run an operation where they do cosmetology, they won't do neutering as a result, unless it's arising out of the surgery. There won't be long-term stays, there won't be animals outside. If anything, going into surgery for your pet is more emotional, so we are looking to provide a more professional campus-like setting that's provided for in the IX zone. We will also be protecting that IX zone, because we're gonna preserve one of the most historic buildings in town, the old Calcani Real Estate Building. Way north on North Main Street Extension, over Route sixty-eight, you see the old Barnes Homestead. That will remain unchanged. All floors will be used for different aspects. There'll be ten employees, there'll be, um, prep rooms, there'll be surgery rooms, there'll be recovery rooms. The whole building will be used, but it'll be kept in its same state right now. And part of the draw for the Whites to do this is they wanna protect that building. It's been on the market for a long time. Unfortunately, nothing has been, um, has gone through, and they're looking to bring their business there for themselves, for the town of Walling, and also protecting that building. In my research into the regulation, um, I went through the regs in various different towns, and I found that this is a growing industry, these boutique surgeries. For instance, in Wilton, they have ophthalmology for your pets. In Norwalk, they have cardiology for your pets. In Southington, they have dermatology for your pets, you know, those blemishes that just won't go away. And in this case, the boutique that we're setting up is for surgery, that Christine can tell you more about. Had this industry been around fifty years ago, when the zone regulation first came out, or thirty years ago, when the IX, IX zone was first regul, uh, promulgated, this certainly would've fit into that. We're preserving the building, we're protecting the neighboring residential zones, we're, we're promoting the campus-like setting. It's just now that the industry has changed, and commerce has changed, um, we need to add a new label, we need to add a new use inside of this zone. So, we protect the campus-like setting, we're protecting the residential neighbors, we're protecting the building, we're promoting a growing industry in town, and if you have any further questions, I'll do the best that I can, but Christine will certainly be able to do better than that.
Thank you, Attorney Lachlan. Questions from the commission for the, uh, for the applicant? Any commission members? Uh, Mr. Pogini, any comments on the application?
Uh, no, I just wanted to make the point that this is, this type of use will be allowed in all uses in the, or all areas of the IX, and not just in this one location. But that was all I had.
Good thing. I guess my only comment would be, again, I point out, uh, is included in Mr. Attorney Lachlan's, uh, letter, where he talks, where he shows as far as the uses, as he mentioned, you know, we do allow outpatient medical treatment facilities, uh, in the, in the IX zone, uh, so, from my perspective, to allow, uh, outpatient treatment for, uh, for animals, pets, and again, is what he had indicated, that, uh, there would not be any boarding of pets, there may be at a time after a surgery, if, uh, an animal needed to be, uh, kept overnight, you know, that would be, uh, that would be taken care of, but it wouldn't be an, an ongoing, uh, an ongoing, or really a highly anticipated, uh, event. So, with that, again, this is a public hearing. Any members from the public who would like to comment on the application, please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing none, uh, I don't believe there's any other commission, uh, any comments from commission members. Attorney Lachlan, if you'd like to make any final comments, or if your applicant would like to make any comments, you're certainly free to do that, you're not compelled to.
We're all set. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Uh, at this particular point in time, I'd entertain a motion to, uh, to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, close the public hearing for application five oh one dash twenty-one zoning text amendment, Small Animal Surgical Services of Connecticut.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hein, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes, at this point in time, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve application five oh one dash twenty-one, text amendment, Small Animal Surgical Services of Connecticut LLC, zoning text amendment to section two dot two, four dot nine, dot B, dot ten, and six dot eleven C of the Wallingford zoning regulations to allow outpatient small animal surgical facilities as an allowed use to the industrial expansion district, as proposed in language entitled, text amendment, small animal surgical facility dated July thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, because we currently allow for outpatient treatment facilities in the zone, uh, this will allow for a professional campus-like atmosphere. It will preserve a historic building, and it will also promote a growing industry.
We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hein, voting beginning, again, with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes, the application's been approved. Have a good evening.
You too, thank you.
You're welcome. Moves us on to our next item on our agenda, which is a special permit, facility housing Choate Rosemary Hall, forty-five Hill House Avenue. Again, if the applicant would please come forward to begin preparing for their presentation, and Mr. Allison, you'd please read the legal notice and note all correspondence for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Legal notice number four zero seven dash twenty-one, special permit for Choate Rosemary Hall Foundation for seven detached units of faculty housing at forty-five Hill House Avenue, Zone R dash one eight. We have a memorandum from Aaron O'Hare, environmental planner, dated July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. We have correspondence from Kevin Pogini, town planner, to, uh, Mr. Patrick Durbin, dated July twentieth, twenty twenty-one. We have correspondence from Fay and Lunt, dated January fourteenth, nineteen seventy. Must've been sitting there. Memorandum from Department of Engineering, dated July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one. Correspondence to the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Committee and the Choate Community, date of receipt, August third, twenty twenty-one. There appear to be multiple signatures attached, and it is a multiple-page document. An interdepartmental referral, date of submission, July ninth, twenty twenty-one, from our fire A small site plan, sediment and erosion control plan. I can't even read that small. Dated June first, twenty twenty-one, is that correct?
That would be it.
I think I need glasses. Um, an inter-office memorandum from Eric Kruger, senior engineer, dated August fourth, twenty twenty-one. An interdepartmental referral from our environmental planner, date of submission, July ninth, twenty twenty-one, and a document regarding, document entitled, calculating rooftop rainfall from the rain catcher Santa Fe, New Mexico, with some photographs and correspondence and notes attached. I think that's everything, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. At this point in time, if the applicant would please introduce himself and begin his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For your record, my name is Dennis Sanaviva. I'm an attorney with the Sanaviva Law Firm. I represent the owner and applicant with us this evening. Mr. Chairman is Patrick Durbin, who's the chief financial officer of Choate Rosemary Hall. He's, he's in the seats behind me. To my left is Darren Overton, who is the project engineer with SLR, and to my right, Sam Sargent, who is with Lazarus and Sargent, the project architect. By way of overview, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the property is five point one acres in size, uh, there's a board up on the easel. Uh, it is located on the northern side of Hill House Avenue, which is a private road owned by the applicant, and verified by a nineteen seventy memo, as identified by Commissioner Allison in the record. Now, the parcel was developed historically with two houses and several garage structures. One house would be retained as part of the project. The applicant proposes to develop the site with a new private cul-de-sac running north, south, about five hundred feet in length and twenty-two feet in width. Uh, the applicant would, with your permission, construct seven new residential, single-family houses, and renovate one existing single-family house to be used exclusively as faculty housing. Now, Darren's gonna present the engineering aspects of the project, including the road layout, location, and the associated drainage, but I wanted to point out, Mr. Chair, before he gets up to the easel, that, um, the applicant has prepared a drainage report that's been reviewed by the town engineer. Uh, we're prepared to address the concerns raised by neighbors in exhibit four oh seven dash twenty-one E, emphasizing, um, that the applicant has given a direction to the project team to design this project so as to not only, um, so as not to exacerbate any existing problems of the brook, uh, around, in the back of some of the North Elm Street properties, uh, west of our parcel, but also so as to improve the existing situation within our design. So, the design takes into consideration some of the existing concerns of the neighbors, and with that, I'll turn it over to our engineer.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Darren Overton from SLR Consulting. I'm a licensed professional engineer, uh, in the state of Connecticut. What I have up here to start with is the, uh, this is the proposed development plan. It's a rendering of the plan, which was submitted as part of the application, but I'd like to flip back and just go over the existing conditions. I'm not sure if everybody is familiar with the area, but this is an existing conditions aerial of the site. As Attorney Sanaviva mentioned, the subject parcel here, outlined in white, is five point one acres. There are three existing buildings there, two which are residences, one which is a garage. There's some remnants of some other buildings that have then been demolished over the years. This property has had development on it going back into the, the fifties, as we've looked back through some of the historic aerials. You can see, there's development around it. To the north, there's existing residential and the cul-de-sac that comes down from the north, which is De Natale Drive. To the east, I'm sorry, north is to the right on this plan, so to the east at the bottom of the page is other land that's owned by Choate. South is Rosemary Lane, existing residential, uh, properties, which other faculty housing properties developed previously by Choate. And then over on the west side are existing residential properties, uh, that front off of North Elm Street. Uh, and as part of this, is the, um, highlighted in blue here, there's actually an existing pond that was developed as part of the subdivision to the north. It's a stormwater management basin, and there is a water course that's highlighted in blue that comes out of that basin and runs just off of the Choate property, through the rear of the, uh, abutting properties off of North Elm Street. So, the, uh, topography of the site is, and the vegetation, you can see, it's mostly wooded, the dark green area. There is developed area around the existing residence and a driveway that comes in to access the residence. There's a ridge line that comes from the north, runs through the center of the site, represented by these rounded contours here, and then there's a broad valley that forms on the eastern side of, of the site. This drains in a southerly direction to the existing twelve-inch cross culvert that comes across, um, Hill House Avenue on the south side of the property, and then the remaining part of the ridge here drains down a slope, so you hit a flatter gradient here. Uh, as part of the wetlands application, our soil scientists did identify that there were wetlands that came onto the property, associated with the stream corridor, and there's some surface runoff that runs down and makes its way towards that stream corridor itself. Uh, there isn't a whole lot of grade change across the site. The high point in the northeast corner is about elevation two eighteen, and as you drop down to the southwest corner of the property, it goes down to about one sixty-six. So, I'll flip now to the proposed development, recognizing that we had this ridge through the site, that we do have two separate and distinct watersheds on the site, we took that into consideration as part of the stormwater management. So, in, in development of this, we have about a five hundred eight, a five hundred-foot cul-de-sac that comes in, it's basically a private roadway to serve the new residences. As you can see, the, the garage and one of the buildings is gonna be demolished as part of the project to make way for the new development. Uh, the existing house here that's going to remain is gonna be renovated, and also will have, uh, a garage addition on the back of it, and then you'll see the seven new residences that wrap around the cul-de-sac with individual driveways coming off, uh, of the cul-de-sac. We also have a stormwater management basin. As I mentioned before, there's this broad valley that comes down, and, and replacement of that valley, essentially, these houses are gonna be developed, and the surface runoff is gonna go onto the roadway. We do have a stormwater collection system in the roadway that comes down and ties into that stormwater basin. The stormwater basin considers not only, uh, management of peak flow attenuation, but also water quality. The catch basins themselves have sumps in them, which will collect the coarse sediments. We do have a sediment for bay, recommended by DEP as part of, in their stormwater manual, as part of the standard design of stormwater basins, so that will filter- So that will filter out other sediments that come into the basin. And then we've designed an overflow structure and storage within the basin. There's storage in the bottom of the basin for the water quality volume. And then above that, there's peak flow attenuation volume. We've designed an overflow structure. And then as part of this, we have an upgrade of the culvert. The twelve-inch culvert gets upgraded to two fifteen-inch pipes. In doing this design, we do an analysis for the two-year storm up to the hundred-year storm. We believe the existing cross culvert that was put in wasn't necessarily designed to handle the hundred-year storm flow. So even though we have a stormwater basin that has the peak flow attenuation, so we have no increase in peak runoff, we do have an upgrade associated with that. The discharge is in the same location as the existing twelve-inch pipe, which runs over other land of Choat and then into the water course as it did previously. So as part of the design, we are cognizant that there is a stream channel over here. We do have runoff onto adjacent properties. And as part of development, with the roadway going up the ridge line and creating the cul-de-sac and the grading for the homes which sit above the roadway, there's a portion of the existing watershed that gets diverted into the stormwater basin and away from the actual overland flow into the stream channel. So I have a graphic here, which in our stormwater management report that we prepared and submitted as part of the application, there's existing and proposed watersheds. This is the existing map. Watershed ten represents that stormwater flow, surface flow, that comes into that broad channel under existing conditions and makes its way to the twelve-inch cross culvert. Then watershed twenty here, which goes to Analysis Point B, is the hillside runoff that goes directly into the stream channel. So the difference under proposed conditions is represented by the red line. So the red line here represents the existing watershed. The black line represents the proposed. And you can see the areas here where the watershed is actually being diverted away from the western runoff and comes into the stormwater basin. So simply by taking that runoff associated with the roadway, which we want to treat in the basin and provide the water quality volume, we reduce the amount of runoff to the west by the reduction in watershed. And then we handle that here in the stormwater basin. And again, discharge it in the same manner as it does under existing conditions. So we've sought to maintain the existing watersheds to the extent practical and also manage the stormwater on our site in an appropriate way. So we do have another small discharge point for the underdrain, which comes over to this location. There's the corner lot here off of Elm Street and Hill House Avenue is another property that's owned by Choat. So all of our controlled discharges will remain on the Choat property. We don't discharge towards any private properties off of that owned by Choat. So as part of this, we also did prepare a sediment and erosion control plan. We only have about three-point-one acres of development associated with this five-point-one acre parcel. With the ridge and the divide in here, the watersheds are further broken up. On the west side, the erosion controls are basically handled by perimeter controls with silt fence and hay bales, which can handle up to a one-acre watershed of disturbance. And then on this side, we're using the permanent stormwater basin as a sediment trap during construction. We have diversion berms and swales that are proposed on the plan to meet the DEP erosion control guidelines, as well as the town's regulations for erosion controls. So that's about it as far as the presentation. And one thing I do want to note is that this stream itself is a very low-grading stream just off of the site. Typically, we look at higher-grading streams and low-grading streams, a threshold about two percent slope. This one has less than a ten percent, I'm sorry, less than a one percent slope. So it is a very low-grading stream through here, and it does have a well and corridor that's associated with it. We've identified that on our side of the property. And then published mapping shows that it does extend on the other side of the stream as well, onto the neighboring properties. So with that, I could either turn it back to Attorney Sanaviva or Sam Sargent for a presentation on the architecture, or...
If I might, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to have Darren just review one more time, perhaps some more lay language for someone like me, the difference in the watershed, that by reducing the watershed area twenty, that that would minimize the flows going to that existing stream, which is on the backyards of a number of the North Elm Street properties. I just wanted to emphasize that, Darren, so that, as I understand it, you've shown the red line, which is the new area of watershed twenty. It's a larger area for east and a smaller area heading west.
Yes. So based on this, we have Analysis Point B, which goes to the stream to the west. We have Analysis Point A, which is our discharge from the basin. And essentially, we show in our computations that there's about a five percent reduction in runoff in either watershed. We achieve it at Analysis Point B by diverting some of the watershed. Not necessarily intentionally, but it's by part of the development in developing the road along the ridge and expanding the cul-de-sac that goes down a portion of the western ridge. By development and the grading, we do divert a little bit of the watershed away from the west. In doing so, we reduce the runoff to the west. In moving that watershed and developing the area change in the land cover in watershed ten, that requires stormwater management for us to collect and store that water and meter it back to meet the peak flow attenuation, so that we have that small five percent decrease in peak flows for the development.
So again, just so I'm clear, when you were talking about the flow west of the stream, you're indicating from what the current flow down to that area is now, it's being reduced by your, what you're proposing is going to be reduced by five percent, is that correct? Or approximately five percent?
Yes.
Is that what you're, that's what you've indicated?
Yes.
Okay.
And eventually, all of the stormwater that goes into the stream, whether it's watershed twenty or watershed ten, makes its way into the stream in some manner further south of the site. So it either runs off directly into the stream and goes through the cross culvert that's here under Hill House Avenue, or it makes its way through the stormwater system and gets into that stream further south. So it's still all in the same watershed. It's just looking at the site itself. Specifically, there's two separate watersheds of how water runs off from this property.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to make that clear, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I know that there probably are people from the neighborhood. I wanted to make certain, because, you know, the normal reaction is that when you take now pervious area and you make it impervious with a cul-de-sac, with the buildings, that somehow that would exacerbate the existing problem that I understand has existed for years over in that stream location with wet backyards. The plan is to certainly not exacerbate, but even more so, even at a five percent mitigation of the existing watershed area to that stream. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask our architect, Sam Sargent, to just explain a little bit about the buildings being proposed.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Samuel Sargent, principal in the firm of Lazarus Sargent Architects at fifty North Main Street. And I'd like to just use the engineering drawing for a second. What, of course, we're proposing here is seven new buildings and one existing building. The seven new buildings are almost identical to the buildings that have been built across Hill Side. And I believe they were built in nineteen, sorry, twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen. The only existing building is, of course, the one on the corner. What we're proposing is a series of, and let me just put my architectural drawing up here. Is six center hall colonials and one expanded cape. The eighth house is, of course, the craftsman-style vintage cottage on the corner of Hill House and the new street. The colonials will range from three bedrooms with a bonus room at about twenty-seven-hundred square feet, sorry, twenty-four-hundred square feet, to four bedrooms with a bonus room at twenty-seven-hundred square feet. The cape will be about eighteen-hundred square feet. And the last one, the three-bedroom center hall colonial with no bonus room, will be about two-thousand square feet. The exterior finishes will be clabbard, in keeping with the style of these houses, with synthetic trim. And the architectural detailing will be as per Choat's normal high-level, high-standard for creating these houses, as seen across the road on Rosemary Drive there. The last house, the eighth house, we're treating as a semi-historical piece by trying to maintain the existing trim and siding. What we will be doing is, the existing siding is vinyl siding on top of deteriorated original siding. And we will be replacing that with composite shingle siding and composite trim. And we'll be maintaining the architectural details wherever possible. The finished materials will extend onto the addition and the garage that we're proposing to be added to that building. The last thing I'd like to bring up is, throughout this design process, Choat has emphasized their idea that what this development should be is a showcase of passive house design, which is low environmental impact. And to do that, what we've done is we've provided a high level of envelope insulation. In the roof, where code requires forty-nine, R forty-nine, we're providing R sixty-eight. The walls under code require R twenty, we're providing R thirty-eight. The floor assemblies over unconditioned spaces, where the code requires R thirty, will be providing R thirty-eight. We've worked hard to eliminate all thermal bridging and air infiltration points in the exterior building envelope. And we've provided a high-efficiency heating and cooling system, incorporating an air-to-air energy recovery fresh air exchange unit. We are providing triple-glazed windows and high-efficiency doors. And in addition, the base bid calls for the possibility of Tesla photovoltaic roof shingles. And that would certainly reduce the impact, the electrical load of these new buildings on the site. In summary, Choat intends these new houses in this development to showcase their commitment to the environmental impact of passive house design, low environmental impact of passive house design. And gentlemen, that's all I have today.
Thank you, sir.
That's our presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commission members with questions for the applicant? The commission members. Mr. Pogini, comments on the, on the application?
No, I'll just note the public correspondence regarding the stream. I've received several comments regarding that.
Good, thank you. And this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on the application? If you would, please come forward with your name and address and your comments.
Michael Mancino, fourteen Sunset Drive, Wallingford. But basically, I'm speaking for my...
Sir, if you could please just come a little bit closer to the microphone so they can pick you up.
Sure. Michael Mancino, fourteen Sunset Drive. I'm basically speaking for my grandchildren at three sixty-seven North Elm Street, which is across from their property. Couple of things. I gave you a packet, basically some pictures and some information. The first page being that the amount of water that a two-thousand-square-foot building would basically accumulate. And basically, it comes down to, a two-thousand-square-foot house doesn't allow for sixty-one thousand gallons of water per year, based on a forty-nine-inch rainfall that we have in Wallingford per year. So if you look at the overall project, you're basically looking at half a million gallons of water. Now, they did a nice job, don't get me wrong. They've pushed a lot of the water to the, I guess you would call that, east and into their retention pond. So they're trying to do what they can. But you're still going to have a significant amount of water going into the existing waterway. Having said that, my concern is the existing waterway doesn't move. And part of the reason why it doesn't move, if you look at the two pictures, the first two pictures showing you the water there, that's not moving at all. And if you follow back to the fourth picture, which shows you three eleven North Elm Street. I have it indicated on there as three eleven North Elm. That property is the one that these gentlemen are talking about that belongs to Choat. And if you follow the pictures further back, the last one, or the next to last one, excuse me, this is the actual back of the property at three eleven, three eleven, excuse me, North Elm Street. That is the brook. That is the property that they own, and the brook is actually blocked at their property. And that's supposed to be where it drains out through a pipe underneath Hill House Avenue, which it's not doing. So apparently, they're not really assisting with the water condition that we have up there. And putting this project through, as little as it's going to come down from the existing project, I believe there will be significant amount of water added to it, as much as they're trying to not have it there. Their problem is at, they're building at three eleven North Elm Street. It's blocking the water coming downhill. If you notice that, that is the backyard. So we've had West Nile virus in Wallingford, and that area is wet. They didn't create the problem there, it's there. But they're adding to it, and they could certainly do better. And I would appreciate any help that they could provide. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, would the applicant like to address those? I assume you folks are, have seen this. If not, you're welcome to... You can take just a few moments, if you would, to look at it. And then if you'd, please comment on the gentleman's comments.
Again, for the record, Darren Overton from SLR Consulting. I have been on the site and have witnessed the stream from, looking at it from the Choat property along the western property line, and then also at Hill House Avenue. Did notice that there are areas, and again, as I mentioned, it's a low-grading stream. So there are some areas where there is standing water. One thing in a most recent site visit, I was out there last week with the facilities director, and we did look at the cross culverts under Hill House Avenue. And we did notice that there was a, looked like a piece of firewood that was stuck in the main cross culvert. So as part of this project, we will go in there and clean out the firewood or any debris that's in there that could be blocking flow. But I also looked downstream of the culvert, and there's standing water at the downstream end as this stream extends into what is a very densely wooded wetland. So I believe there's some debris that's further south of the site and private properties that could be holding up some of the flow as well. But there isn't much that can be done as far as these pockets of standing water, because it's such a low-grading stream. We can't increase the slope of the, of the stream. It is what it is by nature. But the, as part of the project, we are willing to look at those cross culverts, clean out any sediment. Clearly, there's some debris that's been collected in there. And the, the rest of it is really, there's part of it that's a natural stream corridor that extends from Hill House Avenue, where it's just kind of, as you can see in the photographs, the longer grass and the channel runs through there. Part of it is wooded, and then part of it is actually, some of the backyards are actually mowed areas where the mowed lawn comes right up to the channel. So the, the conditions vary. Where it's in a more natural situation, some of the flow can be slowed down by the vegetation while it's growing. So I think inevitably, there's going to be some pockets of standard water. It's just a natural occurrence in a low-grading stream. But we will, as part of the project, clean out any of the culverts that are associated with it to make sure there's no restrictions in flow there.
But also, again, the gentleman showed on his, I believe it was the next to last, unfortunately, I don't have it right in front of me right now. But I think he mentioned the next to last picture on there, where at least looking at it, it appeared to be in the stream somewhat, may I have that, please? Somewhat, you know, somewhat overgrown. And again, just by, by looking at it, I'm not quite, not quite sure with this, you know... And again, just by looking at it, I'm not quite, not quite sure with this, you know, what it depicts and where the stream is versus what's being, you know, what's being depicted on the, on this picture.
So that's a natural wet meadow area that comes in, that's associated with the wetlands on either side of the stream corridor. And this time of year, when the vegetation is tall and lush, you can see in this picture, you actually can't see the channel unless you're looking right up it. I suppose there is a possibility that, working with the Wellands Commission, that could be mowed and maintained as well on the property that Choat owns. You can see in the first picture, when you're looking right up the channel, you can see that the channel-
Yeah, I see that, yeah, I see that there. So, okay, good, thank you. Other, other members of the public who would like to comment? Oh, sure, if there's no, well, let me ask if there are any other members of the public who would like to comment, then we'll go back to you, sir.
Again, Mike Mancino. The picture that we were referring to was right behind three eleven North Elm Street. That is their property and that is choked off. And I can remember the prior owner, I've been there long enough. And that was always kept clean and water flowed. And as he just pointed out, the tube or whatever is on the Hill House that's supposed to be allowing that water to drain is blocked by firewood. So apparently, it's not being maintained as it should be. So I'm not sure if this project is going to exacerbate the situation, which we all don't want. And it is a downhill flow, so water should be flowing. And as my next person will tell you, that we've had this place dry, okay? We don't want to have more water added to it, especially if it's not going to be allowed to flow because of irresponsibility, basically. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other members of the public who would like to comment on the application?
Good evening, Mike Vado, three seventy-seven North Elm Street. Forgive my ignorance, but some of the things, sir, that you, I forgot what his name was, the architect or, no, you're the architect. Came up with the drawings, there was a couple of things that I didn't get and I was wondering if you could explain in layman terms. You mentioned that there will be erosion controls. Can you explain that again?
If you just first just address your comments to the commission, then we'll go, then we'll ask-
All right, I need an explanation on erosion control then.
Sure, absolutely. Again, if the applicant would speak on the erosion controls.
Sure, so during construction, there are erosion control standards that need to be met while it is under construction and we have exposed soils on site. So those requirements are typically written into zoning regulations like you have here in Wallingford. And also, DEP provides a guidance document for design of erosion controls. So we've included, as I mentioned, perimeter controls, silt fence along the lower sides of the disturbance as part of the construction and earth moving for the project. When the catch basins go in, and those will have inlet protection that will trap sediment so that it doesn't get into the drainage system. It'll trap the coarse sediments during construction. There's temporary burms and swales that are proposed that'll direct the surface runoff under exposed soil conditions towards the stormwater basin that will be used to trap sediment. And then when slopes are established, we have proposed erosion control blankets on those slopes in order to establish those slopes quickly. And then as the grading gets finished up and the topsoil, there's permanent seeding that's proposed. And once the permanent vegetation is established, the erosion controls are then removed. So the erosion controls really serve as a temporary method for controlling water quality and preventing sediment runoff while the project is under construction and while there's earth moving and the soils are disturbed.
So you're saying, so is he saying basically, it's during construction that this, that what you're referring to when you say erosion control?
Yeah, I believe, I believe that's, that's the question, or that's the answer, sir.
Okay, thank you. Now, the houses will still be on a hill in comparison to the homes on North Elm Street. And there will be water still coming down, I would imagine. I mean, you can't control all the water going into the sewer system, the storm sewers and whatnot. And my next question is, are trees going to be removed between the Choat property and the homes on North Elm Street? There are, it's, it's pretty densely filled with trees. I'm just wondering if that, if most of them are going to be taken down to accommodate the houses.
And again, if the gentleman would respond.
Yes, again, Darren Overton for the record. There will be trees removed within the area disturbance, within the development area for the project. The change in land cover has been taken into consideration as part of our stormwater management computations. One thing I didn't mention as far as the stormwater management for the houses, on the west side of the proposed access drive, we did include dry wells to collect the roof runoff. Those are sized to collect the first inch of runoff from the roofs of the houses and allow for that to infiltrate into the ground. So that is also part of what we've considered as part of the stormwater management design. The Wellands Commission likes to see that because it promotes groundwater recharge into the ground to match, similar to existing conditions, recognizing that there's change in land cover and there is some pervious surface that's going to be proposed as part of this. So that restores some of the groundwater recharge.
On your plans, would you be able to show the, where the trees that are going to be removed? And the extent of that, if you would please?
This plan may represent it the best. This, let me just flip over to existing to start. So we have an existing condition. Mr. Vado is correct, this dark green area is an area of, that's wooded right now. When you flip over to this page, you can see that along the perimeter of the disturbance, we show that in the dark green is the wooded vegetation that's going to remain. And then the lighter green is what we anticipate is going to be lawn areas. So along here, there is going to be an area of tree loss that's associated with development of the property.
Thank you. You say vegetation, is that trees?
Yes.
And you just mentioned something about dry wells?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I keep doing the wrong-
That's, that's quite all right, I get confused sometimes too.
Dry wells to do, that are going to be put behind the houses? I, I'm sorry, I don't, I'm not an engineer at all, as you can imagine. So if you can explain that again?
If you would, sir, please.
Sure. So a dry well is basically a concrete structure that is excavated and placed in the ground. It is designed with a storage volume, as I mentioned, it's the first inch of runoff from the roof area. It will be able to hold that volume and allow it to infiltrate into the ground. To the extent that that storage is exceeded, the roof leaders would then spill over onto the, onto the ground surface and again, have an opportunity to naturally infiltrate through the lawn area before it runs off into the stream.
See, my, my concerns, it's sort of in conjunction with another problem, an existing problem that we who are, who abut that brook or had that brook in their backyard with the retention basin on Farm Hill, at the bottom of Farm Hill. We are presently still fighting, or not fighting, but trying to get that problem solved for about forty years now. And that has increased the water flow and standing water in that brook. And now, what I'm concerned about is any kind of development beyond those trees or where those trees are, you have to expect more water is going to come into that brook. I don't care how many things you do. And when you take trees down, the roots hold the, hold the soil. And now those, those trees will be down, I'm thinking more erosion is going to take place. You know, my concern is not so much the water, I mean, I am concerned about water staying still. But the issue is, there's too much water. That water is in that brook high all the time. When I first moved to North Elm Street in nineteen seventy-three, that brook was bone dry all summer. As soon as Farm Hill went up, there's water in it all the time. And what bothers me, and at the inland wetlands commission meeting, some person that Choat hired mentioned a science, she's some kind of a scientist, that she looked at the land and that it was intermittent times when the, when the pond was dry. Not true. You can ask any of the neighbors on that list of names that you have. Never, it's never dry. So you know, right away, you start thinking to yourself, we're given, we're being told there's all these precautions that are going to take place. I've been burnt in the past and I'm afraid what's said is not going to really happen. So what recourse do we have if that brook continues to be filled with water? I mean, beyond the brook, most of my neighbors can't even walk back there anymore. It's so saturated. And I'm just concerned that a little bit, I don't care how much more, any amount more of water is going to make it even, even worse. And the other thing that I'm concerned about is, I did have a question, if you could ask, on what a low graded stream means.
Sure. Gentlemen, definition of a low, low grade stream, please.
Low gradient stream is a stream that has less than two percent slope. Based on the GIS contours that we looked at along the stream channel, there's, the existing stream channel is about point eight percent slope. So it's just slightly below one percent, so well within the range of a low gradient stream.
Okay. If you were to okay this or in both, in favor of this, is there anything that could be put in the motion that would, you know, have some recourse for us? If this did, if their plans did not work, you know, you know, something has to be done every five years to make sure whatever they had in place is working correctly. Again, I'm, I'm kind of using that other retention basin as a basis here because I've seen what happens, that the town did not maintain it and now it's privately owned and it's even worse the problem, which is why I think most of us have the excess water. Because it should be a retention pond and it is not, it's a pond. So there's no water, it's not empty so that water can fill up when, when it rains. If we, I have pictures of that last rainstorm we had a couple of weeks ago. My whole backyard up to Choat property and the Natale's property or Farm Hill, all the way over maybe three houses, it was like a lake. Now, everybody in the past has told me, well, that's a hundred year storm, doesn't happen very often. Well, folks, I'm here to tell you that hundred year storms happen every couple of years in our backyards. So again, I am concerned, yes, the water is stagnant, but folks, believe me, that pond, that brook rather, is filled to the top all the time. And there has to be some more water coming in. And I'm not convinced at this point that putting up that cul-de-sac is not going to make it worse.
Thank you, sir. Any other members of the public who would like to speak on the application? No, sir, a young lady would like to speak?
Thank you. My name's Laura Spiteri and I live at three two five North Elm Street, a few doors down from three eleven. And there are thirty-one and a half years. My question for the commission, if they could please ask the applicant, when they are removing those current structures in the back, would they be, are, will they be considering taking out the dead trees? And I noticed with the diagram, those aren't part of any removal currently, or they didn't mention it. But those dead trees, they're coming down the hill, those block the stream. I don't know about firewood, I don't walk back there, but things like that. When they took two cabins down about, ooh, five, six years ago, that was? Five or six years ago that we had asked them about because they were dilapidated, flowing down the hill, they removed the structures and there is runoff in the winter that comes through from snowstorms because it sort of eroded away. So I'd like to just ask if we can make sure that that didn't happen again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, if the applicant would like to address those concerns?
So certainly, with the development of the new homes, we would look to remove any dead trees that may be any sort of a threat to those new homes or any issue relative to the stream channel itself. And as I mentioned previously, we do have erosion controls in place during construction that are going to be implemented in order to prevent significant erosion from the property-
If you could just pull the microphone a little bit closer to you, I see our red light is flashing a bit.
The erosion controls are in place such that to prevent significant erosion from the property during construction. Recognizing that there's exposed soils, there is going to be some soils that does get into suspension during rainfalls. But we have perimeter controls and the controls are designed to meet the town and DEP standards for erosion controls during construction. So it should prevent any significant erosion, but certainly there, during rain events, there's going to be some suspension of sediments. But there's significant traps in place to collect and trap those on site and manage them as part of the construction.
Good, thank you. Any members of the public like to make any final comments? Yes, sir, there's a young lady behind you, you're going to have to be patient. Thank you.
Good evening, Sarah Mancino, three sixty-seven North Elm Street. I've worked on the letter that you have in front of you that has signatures from all of the abutting properties that are along North Elm Street, spoke with all of the residents and even walked into their backyards that I hadn't been in before. And it's amazing the difference that you will see from one backyard, starting at the Vados, going over to ours and moving downstream towards three eleven, which is the property that Choat owns. It's a vast difference from property to property. Again, you've heard that many of us have standing water in our backyard on the other side of the stream, which abuts the Choat property where it's soggy, you will sink in. There are other properties that have major blockages where you can hardly see the path of the stream because of some of the growth that's there. And you'll also notice, note in the document that we presented, some information on fragmites because there are some properties that have extensive fragmite growth and that's a very invasive, non-native plant species, which if you look at the document with the attached photos that you were given earlier, behind three eleven, they mentioned that it was, you know, lush growth this time of year, that's not just grass. A significant portion of that is fragmite growth and it's starting to permeate up the stream. It's not taken care of right there in the back of three eleven. It's covered over that whole area where it would go into whatever they have, what culvert or the channel that goes underneath three eleven. And it's, the growth is starting to move upstream as well. The problem with that is the more water that ends up coming down the stream, and you can't prevent, water goes downhill. It's, it's going to happen. I get that they have measures in place and that's fantastic. But as the homeowners that are going to be directly below this development, we have that concern because we already have all of this water in our backyards. This fragmite growth is going to continue if nothing's done. And it does pose a significant threat to native wildlife and it's a great harboring ground for mosquitoes as well because of the way it just keeps the ground saturated in that way. Our concern is what, what are our yards going to look like? These are the spaces that, just like anybody else, that we enjoy with our children, with our family, where we entertain, where we find, you know, relaxation. And if this development adds to the issues that we're already experiencing, then where are we going in terms of the space that we have to enjoy in our land? They mentioned something about the low gradient stream. I get it, it does not slope a lot. However, again, in the backyards, you'll see that some of the channels, the banks of the stream are very well defined. It's not like it's, you know, totally flat. So there's, again, I understand it's nature, it's, can't affect the slope. But at the same time, amazing tasks are done to work with nature and how it's planned. And if something could be done coming in to make that channel drain better, flow properly, present, prevent continued blockages or anything like that, that would have a huge impact on the homeowners in the area, our backyard, the way that we're able to enjoy the space and make sure that it's a healthy environment for our families.
Thank you. I guess just looking at, listening to her comments, certainly the stream being talked about goes across several properties. But as far as what's on Choat property, what can be done from Choat's standpoint to perhaps increase or help increase the flow of that, of that stream? You mentioned that there was in the channel, there's some wood, there's some blockage. Certainly, you're, you're talking about or planning to remove that. certainly you're, you're talking about, uh, or planning to, to remove that. But as far as what other types of, uh, maintenance issues, ongoing maintenance issues, could you folks, uh, propose in order to, uh, perhaps alleviate this, this issue as best you can, you know, on, uh, on the Choate property?
So I, I, I agree, um, that the channel is fairly well-defined. Um, it's about, and it varies somewhat, it's about a three-foot wide channel, it's about a foot deep. Um, the, there are fragmites out there, you can actually see it in the background of this first picture that was, uh, was submitted. Um, in, in my estimation, in being out there looking at in the field, that this is all native grass here that's on the actual 311 Choate property and that the fragmites are likely further north of that. I believe, um, you know, again, based on looking at in the field and it's not, you know, you don't, you don't see the lines that you see on paper when you're out in the field, but that stand of fragmites probably is on multiple properties, but I don't think it comes as far south as 311. But certainly, um, periodic mowing of this vegetation, particularly along the channel, because the vegetation during higher flows will slow down the flows, so that could help move the water along. And particularly doing that on the 311 property, the lower part of the watershed, making sure that doesn't restrict and hold the water up, um, would be a benefit. And I would think that Choate would be willing to consider that and, and will, be willing to consider a conversation with vegetation management, um, with the neighbors.
So the mowing right now is not being done right now, or periodic mowing, to the best, I guess to the best of your, your knowledge, that's not being done right now, is that? Perhaps fair to say?
Based on what I see out here is a, a pretty natural, um, uh, wetland that's out there as far as a, um, meadow-type wetland. It's not wooded, there isn't really any woody vegetation in there at all, it's all grasses and other plants. The types of vegetation does vary, you could see further in the background of the, of the photo, part of this stream is wooded as you go through, um, the various backyards. Going further, some of, as I mentioned, some of the backyards are, both sides are mowed right down to the stream channel and maintained on a regular basis, um, almost, you know, close to a, a maintained lawn situation. So it, it varies as you move along that stream channel within the area.
Thank you, sir. Other members of the public like to speak? And could I just get a show of hands of who else would like to speak on the application? If you would, please.
Uh, good evening. My name is Lois Shock and I reside at 319 North Elm. I've been there for 20 years. When I moved in, my backyard was mowable. It is impossible, I've lost a third of my backyard to these fragmites. You can't walk in my backyard without hiking boots on up to here or you'll sink. They came from the Choate property and I brought pictures, I'm sorry I didn't make copies, but I'd be more than happy to share them with, uh...
If you'd just please submit them, uh, to me if you would please, and I'll pass them on to the commission and we'll keep them for the record. Thank you. Okay. Okay, thank you. Let them go that way first.
Now, to remove these invasive fragmites is quite a deal. I've been chopping them down for 20 years. And actually, last April 27th, I actually had a stroke in my backyard chopping down fragmites and burning them. They have to be treated with two separate chemicals, they have to be sprayed in late August after the plumes grow. I can't even walk through that area. First of all, I'm done chopping fragmites after the stroke, that's not gonna happen. This past week, I had a member from, uh, the Planning and Zoning to come to lower my taxes because I've lost so much of my property. But the main thing is that stream, nothing moves. My backyard is probably the worst of all of them. I mean, it's, it's just a mosquito nightmare. It would be wonderful if our good neighbors could help us maintain this stream, clean it up. I've enjoyed being a neighbor of Choate's, very much so. And I'm sure that these new houses are gonna be beautiful like the other houses across the way. So we're really here asking for their help with this and I, I hope somebody will listen. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And I think at this point in time, I don't see any other members that would like to speak other than this gentleman? Okay, I'm sorry, sir.
Good evening. Phil Uker, 29 Curtis Avenue. I just hear lots of concerns from some of my neighbors in town and I was struck by the changes in the tree cover from the two images I just saw. Choate owns a lot of property. Several years ago, there was a planned development for an auditorium on Beaumont Avenue, which they, um, I'm very glad to see that they were able to move over to a current location on Christian Street. Uh, I guess my question is if there were any other alternative locations on their campus, for example, about 300 yards to the east of this, which would not be a budding town property and which would not require the removal of so much trees?
Thank you. The applicant like to, uh, address that, uh, comment?
Mr. Chairman, perhaps someone from the Choate family, I'm not familiar with the property that gentleman's talking about.
Is there anyone from the, uh, Choate family that would like to make any comments on that? And again, sir, your, your name and address, please?
Sure. Uh, Patrick Durbin. I'm the CFO of Cho Rosemary Hall, 333 Christian Street. So we did consider other, um, kind of existing land that we own, but for the proximity to the other faculty housing up on Rosemary Lane, um, and this site just makes the most sense and fits the houses properly for the current needs that we have at this moment.
Good enough. Thank you, sir. And again, I think this gentleman will be our, uh, be our last, um, okay, we're not going to keep coming back to everyone here. I'd ask people if you, uh, members of the public rather, if you have questions, please state your questions, we'll get you answers, because we're not going to go through rounds two, three, and four. So again, uh, sir, if you'd like to make some final, if you have some final comments or questions?
The only reason why is because...
Again, just name and address, sir, please.
Michael Mancino, 14 Sunset Drive, Wallingford. The only reason why I come up is because there are answers that are given that are not actually fully truthful, let's put it that way. The, the growth behind 311 is not a natural growth. Yeah, if you let things go, of course, it's gonna overgrow and that's what's happened. I can remember when a, a person named Duke Del Greco owned the house prior to Choate and that waterway would always be flowing and clear and dry up. Now it's just allowed to be overgrown and that's part of the big problem where it's blocking what's coming downstream. So a little help, as the young lady just said, would be a great help. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And again, at this point in time, I don't see anyone else that would like to comment on the application? I guess I would, uh, go to our, our town planner. Uh, Mr. McGee, you've heard some of the comments certainly made by the, uh, the public concerning, uh, the, the stream and appearance from blockages in the stream. Is there something, if this commission were inclined to approve this application, is there something that you would recommend, uh, to address some of those issues as far as, you know, a maintenance? And I'm not sure if that was discussed with the inland wetlands commission as far as, you know, maintenance plan, uh, for the stream? Some, you know, mowing, something, uh, something in that, that nature?
I don't believe it was. I don't see anything in her memo that references it. But as far as regulatory, uh, language would go, there's nothing in our current regulations that would, you know, possibly allow for a maintenance plan or for inspection by water and sewer or anything at this point. But I think you could probably do some kind of, uh, uh, language that would, you know, uh, have the applicant maybe inspect the stormwater system routinely, um, do some kind of cleanups to ensure that the, that the stream is flowing correctly. But as far as regulatory language is concerned, uh, being as, you know, as a, it's, it's, it's a kinda tough to, as far as the, the adjacent property, it would be hard to put something in there that would require them to do cleanup.
Well, I would look, I, I, again, I'm not, not thinking of something for adjacent properties, I'm, I'm talking more specifically about their property as far as having any requirement that there's a, you know, periodic cleanout of, of, of the stream that's on, you know, that, that's simply on, on, on their property. Again, it was mentioned there was some...
Right.
Uh, you know, some trees or logs, lumber in there. I know it was mentioned that farther down, uh, there appears to be some trees, that may be dead trees, what have you, that are on other people's property, not Choate's property, which is, would not be then their responsibility. I'm speaking more of just specifically on Choate's property and as far as maintenance of, of the stream, which is on, on their property, as far as cleanout, something in that, that nature. That's, that's really what I'm referring to.
Yeah, I think you could write a language that would address, uh, all of the issues, um, in a way that, uh, the applicant would be, um, you know, able to perform some kind of cleanup, some kind of routine inspection of the stormwater system to make sure that it's, uh, performing to the way it was designed on the plans. But as far as, yeah, like I said, there's nothing in our regulations that would require that.
No, I, I, yeah, I understand that. Okay. Thank you. Again, I'll bring it back to the commission for comments from commission members. Mr. Uh, Mr. Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, to, to your point, I, I do have a number of conditions of approval that I've jotted down, um, you know, pertaining to, you know, maintenance of the, you know, the culvert and, and the, you know, looking at the overall, you know, stream bed and around the property. Um, so, you know, I can read these off to the...
Yeah, I think maybe perhaps it would be beneficial to, uh, just send, uh, give what your, uh, what your issue, not issues, but what some of your ideas for addressing it and discuss that with the applicant.
So, eh, eh, okay, thank you. Um, so the, these were, you know, based on the discussion from the residents, these are the, uh, conditions of approval that, you know, I have in mind. And, you know, I just wanna run them by you, see if you're okay with this. And the first one was, eh, you know, clean out that culvert. But then, you know, maintain some type of regular maintenance routine to, to ensure that the culvert, you know, is, is free-flowing. Um, you know, the engineer mentioned, um, working with inland wetlands to get approval to, to mow some of that area to free up the flow. Um, eh, you know, I, you, you do have to get permission to, to do that, um, but, uh, I'm, I'm sure they would be willing to do that, um, grant that, that permission. So that, that was another condition I had. The engineer also mentioned he would look for any other, uh, impediments to the stream, you know, on your property. And, you know, if you could, um, you know, do that, do, do a pretty good inspection. You know, somebody mentioned the, uh, dead trees and, you know, things like that, which may be, you know, blocking things as well. So those, those were the, the three or four things I, that, you know, I thought could help with this.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Other, uh, I don't know if the applicant would like to make any comments on that, certainly what's been stated seems, seems to be very reasonable.
Mr. Chairman, yes, I've had an opportunity to discuss this with my client. I think they are reasonable suggestions. I can tell you that, um, the Wetlands Commission did have as a condition, not specifically to, uh, maintenance of the stream or brook area, but what they did say was that during the course of construction, it was one of the conditions of approval number five, there's the possibility of the discharge of some sediment flows to this location during that, especially significant storm events. And so they, they directed that the, uh, the, this particular area be monitored closely before and after storm events for adequacy of protections, any deficiencies to be rectified as soon as possible. So there is an acknowledgement in our obligation in that permit. This would be, I think, another prudent, um, condition of, of any approval and, and Choate is certainly in favor of that.
Sure. And again, just for clarification, the inland wetlands, that is just during construction, correct?
Correct, that is correct.
So again, what Mr. Uh, Cohen would be proposing, uh, perhaps in a, in a motion, would be post-construction?
Understood. And I just wanna point out, I'm told by our engineer that three years ago, uh, that they did dredge, uh, the part of the stream behind 311, uh, North Elm. And again, you'd have to go to Wetlands, as you point out, and, and I suspect that they might be generous in their support. Matter of fact, the chairman mentioned it during the course of that, this last particular hearing about the possibility of coming back and looking to do something there.
Okay, thank you. Other commission members that'd like to make comments, uh, on the application? Uh, Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Overton, uh, you mentioned that you had, um, done some computations and that there would be a, a, a net 5% reduction in runoff to the stream to the west, I think, if I understood you correctly, was that?
Correct, yes. It, it varies based on watershed, but it's roughly 5%, whether you look at either watershed or overall, about a 5% reduction.
Yeah. And is that a computation that you submitted to us at all as part of this application?
So yes, that's part of the stormwater management report that was submitted and has been reviewed by the town engineer.
Is that something that we have in our packets? I, I don't...
Uh, yes, it should have been as part of the, the actual, uh, when the application was delivered. It's called drainage calculations, I believe. Yeah. It should have been.
And so I, I'm not a, I'm not an expert, you know, I'm a layperson. So when I take a look at these, um, is there a particular map or something in this packet that shows that 5%, um, net decrease?
So there, there's no map in the site plan set that shows that. It would be in, in the drainage report.
All right. Um, the, the other question I had for you is that, um, is there any way of moni, monitoring runoff? So after, after you put this in place, obviously the neighbor's concern is they had a prior, um, development that, uh, in their opinion at least, increased the amount of water that was pooling in their backyards. Is there any way to monitor runoff after a development has been completed?
So monitoring runoff, uh, I, I guess the, the simplest way to do that would be to, to measure stream channel flow. Um, like the USGS, uh, monitors stream flow on larger channels, uh, particular ones that have a floodplain associated with it, they have gauges usually located at bridges. I would say that it's not easy in, to, to monitor that or to put a gauge in in a small stream such as this. that or to put a gauge in in a small stream such as this. And in order to compare, um, post-development, you would really need to have a significant amount of data pre-development to make any sort of judgments as to whether there's any changes. And as part of that, would have to monitor rainfall for an extended period of time associated with any of those gauge-type readings. So I, I would say that it could be done, um, but it's not simple to do. And, um, it, it's difficult to find meaningful conclusions, um, in the data.
Okay. I mean, 'cause you were able to, eh, I, I mean, were you able to, to determine what the current runoff is? Because you did do some sort of computation where you were able to determine that this would reduce the runoff by 5%.
Yes, absolutely. So what we do is we, first of all, look at the surrounding watersheds. Um, we look at FEMA mapping to understand whether there's a floodplain. Um, we usually inquire with the local town engineers to understand whether there's any drainage concerns or issues in the areas. Um, we look to the owner to understand whether there's any localized drainage issues. Um, and then as part of the computations, we look at the soils on-site. The, that's a factor in the amount of surface water runoff. We looked at the vegetation. So we actually do calculations to estimate runoff under existing conditions as the site exists right now, with the existing home on it, the level of impervious surface, the level of wooded surface. And then under proposed conditions, we rerun those calculations, based on the change in land cover. As you can imagine, and some of the public mentioned here tonight, there are concerns of loss of the wooded area. Um, when you convert a wooded area to a grassed area or impervious, um, you would increase runoff. So we then calculate the runoff based on the proposed condition, and that's how we actually size the stormwater management controls in order to, um, mitigate for that increase in runoff. And those computations follow standard methodology that all engineers use, that's been developed over the years. And we actually look at real rainfall numbers, um, that are accumulated and published. And those are recently updated because I think as we have all seen, and, you know, people have mentioned it here tonight, we are seeing an increase in rainfall. It's not just in Connecticut. If you look at historic information, you can see that over time, um, the rainfall has increased. And we used to do our calculations based on what was called this TP40 publication that was based on rainfall data that was 50 years old. Um, there's new, um, higher rainfall totals that have been adopted by the DOT, and most towns, um, encourage the use of those. We use those in all our calculations. So those take into account more, um, recent rainfall data. Um, and, you know, w- we're, we're seeing it. I mean, it's, it's partly to do with climate change. It's partly to do with changes of what's happening in our weather patterns, but we are seeing increased rainfall. And we're seeing, uh, you know, some people mention that a hundred-year, um, storm occurs more frequently. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure that it does, but we definitely have more higher-intensity rainfall occurrences that occur. And we do monitor what, what happens in the environment. And as, as an industry, um, we, there's further guidance that's developed, and we continue to stay current with that guidance. And we prepare our stormwater management, um, plans based on the most recent guidance. And it's, it's not just individual private developments that we do. We, we work on a lot of DOT projects and a wide range of different types of developments. So we take in that, that into consideration in, in all of the work that we do. Um, I, I know it's not simple, and it's really not simple to explain, but there's established protocols that we follow in our industry, and it's all based on those standards, which has been reviewed by your town engineer. And I, I believe she's comfortable with what we've prepared for this project.
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the response. Um, and my experience has been that, um, Choate is, um, you know, ha- has been a good neighbor and, and willing to, to work with, uh, the community in general. So, um, that's my, uh, uh, experience with Choate. I guess my question would be, um, eh, you know, eh, um, you, you all as representatives of Choate, um, have heard some of the concerns of the neighbors. And, um, what I could foresee happening is that, um, you know, this project gets approved, and then, um, you know, there, there's issues afterwards, or the, you know, eh, one of the neighbors insists that this is, you know, as soon as they built this, this development, you know, we're, we're getting more water in our backyard. My question to you as representatives of Choate is, um, is there anything that you can offer in terms of either monitoring for a certain amount of time, uh, if this project were approved, or anything, um, that could be done, uh, that could be presented to the neighbors on a regular basis for, you know, a limited amount of time to show, um, that there has not been any change in runoff? Because that, that clearly is going to be one of their concerns going forward.
So, so there's a couple benefits to, to the design, um, that I think provides some assurance, um, that this stormwater basin or what we're designing is not going to dump more water onto their property. Um, I did go up the street, upstream, and look at the stormwater pond that was built as part of the prior development. And I did look at some historic aerials. It looks like that development, um, was under construction in 1986 when I looked at the Yukon aerial for that. Um, and there was, you know, obviously, um, a subdivision that was built, roadways that were built, and there was a basin that was built in the stream where all of that runoff went into the stream. And there's no place else for the water to go but to discharge into the stream, um, and run through the properties, um, of, of the folks that have been here tonight. Um, the difference what we're, and, and that basin has a fountain in it. It has a permanent pool. It's, it's a pond. It's not just a stormwater management basin. It's a pond. What we've designed here is, is a stormwater management, that basin that's designed to drain dry. It has an under-drain in it, so it's not planned to have a permanent pool. So, and we also have a maintenance plan that was, um, is part of the project for that to be maintained so that will continue to drain dry over time. The other part of this is that the discharges from our stormwater basin drain onto the Choate property and into the stream. So they're not directed towards the neighbor's property. They are, their homes are all up gradient of our discharges. So if our discharge was to fail and discharge more water, it wouldn't necessarily affect the folks that are here tonight that have concerns about their, their yards. Um, and there is a comprehensive management plan that's part of the stormwater, uh, design, um, that we've submitted to the town engineer and again has been reviewed. And we've taken into consideration, uh, also some of the conditions of the Wetlands approval. So I think there are some assurances in place, and I wish I had a better answer for being able to monitor it, but it's, it's just very difficult to monitor changes in, in runoff, particularly with such, um, small watershed areas. Um, like I said, the, the ones that the USGS monitors, those are large stream channels. Um, it, I'd say it's easier to, um, monitor and gauge those flows over time with, with larger watersheds. They're more predictable.
Thank you, Mr. Hine. Uh, Mr. Menard, I believe you had a question or two for the applicant?
No, I, I think as a good neighbor, I think that Choate should be able to, with the neighbor's permission, be able to straight this problem out with the flow. I don't think that's a, a big expense, and I think it would be, as a good neighbor, I think you should do that. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Menard. Any other commission members? Mr. Peggini, would you have any, uh, final comments you'd like to make on the, uh, on the application?
Uh, no, not at this time.
And the applicant, uh, before I, uh, before I close the public hearing, any final comments that you would like to make?
I think we're set, Mr. Chairman.
Good. Thank you. So at this point in time, if there's no more comments from commission members, from our staff, from, uh, from the applicant, I entertain a, uh, entertain a motion to, uh, close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, close the public hearing for application 407-21, Choate Rosemary Hall.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hine. Uh, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen, please.
Yes.
Yes.
And...
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. So at this point in time, uh, is there any discussion on the application? Uh, or if a commission member would like to make a motion on the application?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve application 407-21, special, Choate Rosemary Hall, special permit request to construct seven new detached dwelling units and a newly constructed private driveway to be used as faculty housing for currently operating private school as shown on plans entitled Choate Rosemary Hall, New Faculty Housing, dated July 9th, 2021, subject to, uh, the following conditions of approval. Uh, number one, comments from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, Water Sewer Division, dated August 4th, 2021. Number two, comments in inter-office memorandum from Aaron O'Hare, Environmental Planner, dated July 19th, 2021. Number three, comments in inter-office memorandum from the Department of Engineering to the Planning and Zoning Department dated July 28th, 2021. Number four, an erosion and sedimentation control bond in the amount of $40,000. Number five, uh, applicant will clean out the cross culvert on the site, uh, behind 311 North Elm and maintain, um, uh, periodic maintenance. Uh, number six, uh, applicant will work with inland wetlands to, uh, get approval to, uh, periodically mow the, uh, wet meadow in, uh, same location. And number seven, applicant will look over the, uh, site for other impediments and, uh, to the stream.
Do we have, we have a, uh, motion on the application? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hine. Voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes, the application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Moving on, on the, uh, agenda, our next item is, uh, a, uh, old business. It's a site plan. For, uh, Six Research LLC at 4A Research Parkway, the applicant and/or its representative, please come forward to begin, uh, preparing for their, uh, presentation. And yes, if, uh, Mr. Allison, if you would please note all correspondence for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have an interdepartmental referral, date of submission April 8th, 2021, from our fire marshal. We have correspondence to Six Research LLC dated April 23rd, 2021, from Thomas Talbot. We have a memorandum from the Department of Engineering dated April 28th, 2021. We have an inter-office memorandum from Scott Shipman, Engineer, Water and Sewer, dated April 29th, 2021. We have a stormwater management system computation package from Summer Hill Civil Engineers and Land Surveyors, dated receipt May 3rd, 2021. An inter-office memorandum from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, Water and Sewer Divisions, dated May 10th, 2021. Email correspondence, correspondence, excuse me, from Dennis Sannaviva, dated May 6th, 2021. A memorandum from Aaron O'Hare, Environmental Planner, dated June 8th, 2021. A memorandum from the Department of Engineering dated June 2nd, 2021. An interdepartment referral from our fire marshal, date of submission April 8th, 2021. Email correspondence from Dennis Sannaviva, dated 6/11/2021. And correspondence to Allison Kapaschinsky, Town Engineer, dated June 17th, 2021, from Summer Hill Civil Engineers and Land Surveyors.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allison. If the applicant would please introduce himself and begin, uh, presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For your record, my name is Dennis Sannaviva. I'm an attorney with the Sannaviva Law Firm, and I represent the owner and applicant. With me to my left is the project engineer, Michael Ott, from Summer Hill Civil Engineers and Land Surveyors, who will be making the, uh, technical part of the presentation this evening, Mr. Chair. Uh, by way of background, the property is a vacant 3.2 acre parcel of land. It is located in the IX zone, as you see from our application. It abuts Six Research Parkway to the north. That property was before this commission, uh, back in December through March, December of 18, 2018, through March 11th of 2019, when you approved an application for the development of, of vehicle storage under appeal, under, uh, application 202-19. This is the same use of that site as currently exists. As you've driven by, I'm sure, Six Research Parkway, you may have been, you know, acknowledging property across the street, but you, hopefully you saw this piece too. Again, same use, except this parcel will have a building with no offices. The original approval at Six Research had, had office space, which is there, uh, thus there's no need for water and sewer in this building. Um, to develop the site, uh, as an expansion of the, uh, automotive storage facility is the application. There would be a new 6,000 square foot building, which Mike will explain. The original at Six is nine, 9,720 square feet. So this is a smaller building, but it's really designed for storage, for vehicle storage. Uh, as in the, uh, original approval for Six Research Parkway, there would be no fueling, no repairs, no maintenance, uh, or washing of vehicles would, would occur on this site. Would be for indoor storage. Again, that's identified in our narrative as part of the application. Uh, there is no separate access being proposed for this site. That's how, how it's merged into Six, so that there still would remain the one curb cut, uh, that's existing on Six Research. With that, I'll turn it over, Mr. Chairman, to Michael Ott to explain the, uh, particulars of the, of the application.
Good evening, Mr. Uh, thank you. Um, good evening, Mr. Chairman and, and, uh, commission. Um, for the record, I'm Mike Ott. I'm a licensed professional engineer and land surveyor with Summer Hill Civil Engineers, um, with an office at 60 Wall Street in Madison, Connecticut. Um, I, I think Attorney, um, Sannaviva, um, gave you a great, a great description of the project. Um, this is essentially a, an expansion of, of the existing facility at, next door, at Six Research Parkway. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, the, and you may have said this, the intention is, uh, the, for the owner to merge the two parcels, um, on, once they are, um, eh, should this application be approved. So, um, I think the, the biggest, um, the, the thing I'd, I'd like to talk about the most on this site is, um, stormwater management. The, the needs, um, you heard a lot about stormwater management just now in the previous application. Um, the needs of the owner require a large amount of pavement. Um, in our stormwater management report, we know that there's, the, under the proposal, we'd be proposing an additional, uh, or I should say today, there is no impervious land surface cover on this property. The, the property is undeveloped. Um, and our proposal would create 61,700 square foot round numbers of impervious surface, mostly pavement. The building is only 6,000 square feet in roof area. The remainder of that 61-7 would be pavement. And it's, and it's driven by the needs of the owner and the operation of the facility, uh, the, the car carrier vehicles, if you're, if you recall the previous application. So in order to, um, because we're within the Watershed Protection District, and because this site drains to the south along Research Parkway and then ultimately crosses Research Parkway, and surface water runoff enters a, a wetland on the east side of Research Parkway, and that wetland, uh, ultimately drains to the Muddy River and to Mackenzie Reservoir, as we've noted in our report. We have, um, designed a, a pretty extensive stormwater management system focusing both on water quality and on the control of peak discharges, peak, peak rates of discharge of stormwater runoff. So we're taking an undeveloped site that's relatively flat, a little, a little bit of rolling topography. Um, it, it was, um... It, it was, it was mowed for the survey, but prior to being mowed, it, it was all brush, lightly wooded and brush. So, we're, the proposal is to take that and build this new building and all this pavement. So, we've designed a stormwater sand filter that accepts runoff from all that parking, all that pavement area. That sand filter, in simple terms, takes care of water quality, it meets the town's water department standards, it's been reviewed by the town's water department. And higher flows above water quality rainfall events or rainfall depths are, are directed to a proposed stormwater management basin in the lower right corner of the site, it would be the southeast.
Excuse me, it'd be beneficial if perhaps, just for the benefit of the commission and for any members of the public that may be viewing this, if you could just point that out on the, you know, on the map there. And then just give a, just a general overview, if you would, too, of the, the entire project for, you know, people who may be looking at this and somewhat interested in, in exactly what this is. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, I wasn't sure you'd be able to see this very well, or the camera would be able to pick it up. So, Research Parkway on the right-hand side of the sheet, up and down the sheet. This is a through lot, has the, the parcel has frontage on, on Thorpe Avenue on the left-hand side of the sheet, of, north and, running north and south also. The upper part of the sheet is the existing Six Research Parkway facility. And this is, this is the existing driveway that serves that facility and will also serve this one. The lower part of the sheet is the undeveloped parcel 4A. The proposed building is in the south, would be the southwest corner of the lower parcel here, this, this gray rectangle, 6,000 square feet. The sand filter, stormwater sand filter, and stormwater management basin on, on the east side of the site, closest to Research Parkway, and that, that large pavement area in the middle of that site that I spoke about. So, stormwater runoff, excuse me, stormwater runoff from this large parking area gets directed to the stormwater sand filter. That handles water quality. Higher, greater rainfall depths than the water quality depth get, get diverted to this large stormwater management basin, which controls peak discharges before all, all stormwater runoff is discharged at the, at the current discharge location at the lower, lower right of the site, the southeast corner of the site. Stormwater runoff today and, and will, when this is developed, flows to the south, on the west side of, on our side, on the west side of Research Parkway. It, it enters the stormwater management facilities of the next developed site to the south, already developed site, and then crosses Research Parkway to the east and enters that wetland that I talked about that's associated with the Muddy River. So, the site design is, is pretty simple. It's, it's, you know, ju, just like the other site, it's, it's basically a, a large paved area to accommodate the, the car carrier vehicles and the building that Attorney Sennaviva described. Same, the exact same type of exterior lighting that's on the, that's on the Six Research Parkway site will be proposed on, on this site. The same type, same height, same type of chain link fencing around the parking area that's on, on this site today. And again, this, no new driveway required, this will be the access driveway, and, and I believe ultimately the parcels will be merged. I think that, I think that's the, that's the plan of the owner.
Mike, if you can point out how far back that impervious area goes, and that there's still a pretty significant buffer between the rear of the developed part of this parcel and Thorpe, and the balance of our piece, just like last time.
Yes. So, the, the, the most westerly proposed edge of parking and building is, is here where I'm tracing with my finger, and there's approximately 150 feet between that most westerly limit of parking and building and Thorpe Avenue. And that, that area will, there, there will be no activity in that area, and the existing vegetation along, along the street line of Thorpe Avenue will, will remain. So, there's a, there's a good 150-foot buffer here between, between the proposed construction and Thorpe Avenue.
Thank you.
If I might, Mr. Chair, again, just a couple of operational points that come from the meeting we had back on March of 2019. Some of the commissioners who are sitting here tonight were concerned about fumes or, or, or smoke, or exhaust rather, from, from vehicles. Mr. Quartuccio, the owner had indicated at that time that all of his vehicles were relatively new in 2019, they were 2016 or newer, and that all of them had their exhaust underneath the vehicle, so that it wouldn't emanate out to the, to the neighbors. There was also a concern, two, yeah, they have two catalytic converters and a muffler. Exhaust system is located underneath the trucks, and he indicated back in 2019 at night, no one would know they were running. You had asked, Mr. Chairman, at that point, what was the distance from the property line to the fence on the west side of the property, as Mike just pointed out, and then it was approximately 120 feet, and I think it's about 150, so it's kind of a similar distance away. And that was designed specifically to make sure that there was no impact for the residential neighbors in that industrial zone on Thorpe Avenue.
Okay. Is that the extent of your presentation?
It is, Mr. Chairman.
Just, before I ask other commission members, just, when, when I'm looking at it, kind of begs the obvious question. The existing site, it's a larger building, and it appears to be a lot less impervious surface, I think. And then on the new site, it's a smaller building and, you know, more impervious surface and appears more parking for, I guess, the car carriers, the, you know, and I think it, the last, the prior application, it was mentioned, you, some of those car carriers could be 18-wheel or some of them could be smaller. There is, one, if you could explain just why smaller building, more impervious surface, how that operates, and then also the fact that, it's my understanding that there's no overnight parking for the car carriers. Is, is that correct? And that's not the intent?
That, yeah, that's not the intent. Again, my understanding is that the vehicles go out usually on a Sunday or Monday, and they come back, Mr. Quartuccio indicated either on a Wednesday or Friday, depending on where they're going. It was all up and down the eastern seaboard. So, that, it, it really was a question of, of, he has another site in Wallingford where he does all the repairs and maintenance. So, this would be his quote-unquote "clean" location. The, the reason for, certainly the building was to house more luxury vehicles. There's been a, a pretty significant uptick in, in that area of his business, and so that's the genesis of this 6,000 square foot building. That would be housing vehicles inside. I think to Mr. Hein's question last time, would there be any lifts? There were no, there are no lifts there or none, none planned in this operation. What else?
Again, why the more, again, it appears that there's more impervious surface there. What, what would be the, the reason for that? Than looking at the, looking at the other building, again, we have a, a larger building, lot less impervious surface.
I think it's a, this is a smaller piece than the first, I'm, I'm not sure Mike would know. I, I thought it was at the 3.2 acres. The, I do know that the proposal, as we said in our narrative, to be about 15, 18-wheel delivery trucks, leave the site for deliveries every Sunday night or Monday and return on Friday the same week. So, it was, you may recall, there was a, a limit of eight tractor-trailers or car carriers in the original plan, and so that's why the need for additional impervious area. I think the other thing where they were concerned about, and you and your engineering department wanted to make sure that all the movements of the trucks can be done onsite, so there's no backing into research, and I think part of the, the need for that pavement area is the truck movements.
Thank you. Commission members with questions for the applicant? Mr. Hein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to be clear for the record, there will not be any repairs being performed at this site.
That's correct.
And there will not be any washing, vehicle washing, or, or car washes, or anything like that being performed at the site.
No maintenance, right.
I think, I think your water department actually spelled that out also in their memorandum, I believe.
Yeah, yeah. I just, for the record, I just want to be clear that that's, that's the intent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hein. Any other commission member? Any other commission members? Mr. Pecani, any comments that you'd like to make on the application?
No comment.
And seeing that there are no members of the public here, I don't believe any members of the public would like to speak. So, with that, unless the applicant would like to make any further comments on the application, I bring it back to the commission for a motion on the application.
We are set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve application to 10-21 Six Research LLC for a Research Parkway. Site plan approval request for an automotive storage facility located at 6/4A Research Parkway as shown on plans entitled East Side Auto Transport Automotive Storage Facility dated April 2021 and revised to June 2nd, 2021, subject to the following conditions of approval. Number one, sedimentation and erosion control bond in the amount of $10,000. Number two, comments in inter-office memorandum from the Department of Engineering to the Planning and Zoning Department dated April 28th, 2021, and June 2nd, 2021. Number three, comments in inter-office memorandum from the fire marshal to the planning and zoning department dated 4/15/21, 2021. Number four, comments in inter-office memorandum from the Water and Sewer Division to the Planning and Zoning Department dated 4/29/2021, and 5/10/2021. And number five, comments in inter-office memorandum from the environmental planner to the planning and zoning department dated June 8th, 2021.
Thank you. We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hein. Voting beginning with Mr. Cohen, please.
Yes.
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 And yes, your application's been approved. Have a good evening, gentlemen.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, it brings us down to our bond releases and reductions. I guess at this point in time, Mr. Pecani, I'll let you take the wheel for the, if you would, for the rest of the, rest of the agenda.
Sure, I'm just going to start with a staff update on the IX and I-5 regulations.
Just jumping back, are there any bond releases or reductions being recommended?
Uh, yes, the, I'm sorry, the, the number eight is being recommended. Number seven has not submitted as built as of yet.
So, number eight would be a complete release of the, of the bond, is that correct?
Correct.
Do we have, do we have a motion on the release of the Thurston Associates 3 Thurston Drive
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to release the bond from site plan Thurston Associates 30 Thurston Drive.
We have a mo, uh, motion to release the bond. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hein. Voting beginning with Mr. Cohen, please.
Yes.
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 And yes, the bond has been released. And again, Mr. Pecani, if you'd please continue.
So, the, just wanted to give an update on the IX and I-5 regulations. We had an initial meeting to discuss the proposal on the first draft of the regulations that was held on July 8th. We met with town departments, received input at that meeting. Private meetings were then held with Water and Sewer, Economic Development, and Corporation Council. Comments were gathered from those departments and incorporated into a second draft of those regulations. Second draft of those regulations just went out on Friday, and they were distributed to all town departments, and hopefully we'll get a second round of comments. And sometimes, sometime in the next 10 days, we plan to hold another full staff meeting with all of the town departments to gather their input, and hopefully, our plan is to hold a workshop before the September meeting on the regulations.
Before our September meeting?
If that's possible, I don't know how.
Yeah, I, I think we, I'm not quite sure with, as far, that's something we'll have to send out. Once, once you're in a position, at least I would suggest, once you're in a position to, to have a workshop, then we can send out, you know, to commission members to see exactly what their, what their availability is.
I'm confident with what we have in the second draft right now, that we can get a workshop going in the next couple of weeks, I would think so.
And if you'd please continue.
Just administrative approvals, any questions on those? Just change of use for axe-throwing business to allow liquor onsite? Change of use at 321 North Colony Street? Change of use at 920 South Colony Road? And a site plan for 40 Carpenter Lane to construct a small overhang there? Any questions on those? And then on to ZBA decisions?
I can't even remember ZBA decisions, that's why I had to, and I'm unprepared, but we have no meeting, no ZBA meeting for the month of August, as you're experiencing. It's, it's, it's high vacation, et cetera, time. So, we, you know, right now I have, I'll lead right into my enforcement report, which, which encompasses it, what we've been doing of late, and I'm test-driving my new report on you. So, I'll give you a monthly report, activity, sort of where the efforts are being focused, and that ties into the ZBA decisions, too. Right now, we seem to be very heavy on big violations, trying to be served by use variances. So, and, and also some construction after the fact. Bulk standard area variances, again, to allow something that's already occurred. So, that seems to be where it's at. Expecting a couple new things for September, have not gotten them yet, so can't really tell you what's on the agenda coming up. But if that, if that sort of format on the new report was my first sort of going at it, rather than sending you the same list, month after month after month, I thought it would, it would be more telling and more informative in that format, so.
Excuse me, any commission members with any, with any comments for Mrs. Torre or for her reporting? Good. So, with that, I believe it brings us to, unless there's any other business to come before the commission, I believe that... So, with that, again, we've come to our, the end of our, you know, of our agenda, so at this particular point in time, I'd entertain a, entertain a motion to, to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our August 9th meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hein. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Were adjourned? Thank you very much, gentlemen.